Good morning. Welcome to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors Board Meeting. This is October 4th, a little past 8:30, and welcome to your boardroom. And I'd like to call the meeting to order with our roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks? Supervisor Michaels?
Here.
Supervisor Flynn? And Supervisor Long?
Here. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to welcome and invite up Pastor Dan Hall of the Church of the Nazarene to provide a moment of affirmation. Good morning, Pastor Hall.
Good morning. Thank you. Father, we pray this morning that what happens in this room, in discussion, and in action, and in decision, will be blessed by your wisdom. Father, I pray that each member of the board will feel a sense of agreement and a sense of understanding today. We're privileged to live in such an incredible place. So we ask now for your blessing of peace, your blessing of wisdom, and by the end of the day, your blessing of success and accomplishment. We thank you. In Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Flynn would do it.
Please turn in the flag. Ready to begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So moved.
I made a motion of second to accept the minutes of September 27th. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. At this time, we will have our agenda review. Mr. CEO.
Madam Chair, members of the board, there are only three very minor changes. Your consent item number 16 incorrectly reflected District 3. It should read District 1 and 5. That was Consent Item 16. Affects districts 1 and 5. Consent item number 20, there is a revised letter. And the addendum item is not Item 35. It should have read Item 34. And the request is that this item be heard right after the consent agenda items are approved.
Okay. All right. Any others, then? I'd ask that the agenda review be accepted as presented by our CEO.
Second.
Motion. And a...
Second. Oh, I thought I heard Steve say second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion you or the... Oh.
No. I'll move the agenda as soon as I can.
Second.
Motion and second. Hearing no objection. So ordered. Thank you. The consent items, 10 through 20. Any request on that? Action?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the consent items as presented. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. So at this time, then, we will, with the board's concurrence, take the addenda item 34 and hear that item. And that is going to be presented by... If I could find it. I see the fire chief is here.
Sheriff.
Okay. The addenda item is to declare the emergency. Declaration. So here comes everybody. Fire Chief Roper. Bob Levin, our Public Health Officer. Laura Hernandez, Office of Emergency Services. Good morning.
Good morning, madam chair, members of the board. Mr. CEO. We are requesting the board's ratification of the emergency proclamation that was issued as a result of the fires. While the fires are still going, or almost contained, we expect that we are going to continue to incur costs as a result of this disaster. We have the approval of the Fire Management Assistance Grant, which I believe the fire chief will talk about, but we're currently looking at approximately $15 million in damages, including fire suppression costs. And we're hoping that with the cost estimates still coming in, that we will be able to pursue a state declaration. The question of the presidential is still up in the air, but we are working on those numbers. We still have county departments that are reporting in with their estimated damages and incident costs. So with the board's approval, we'd like to have you ratify this proclamation.
Okay. Other questions or comments at this time?
Move approval.
So motion and second, any objection?
No objections, just a request. Will you maybe weekly just keep us posted about where we are with this declaration of emergency? I mean, after last winter, when we get drug out and drug out and drug out.
Absolutely.
I would like us to be able to be proactive in terms of approaching the governor and all of that, if it does drag again.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments? Chief Roper? Oh, there was a motion and second on that. Any objection to that? Hearing none, so ordered. Chief Roper, would you give us further update? Thank you, sir.
Okay. Good morning, madam chair, members of the board. Mr. Johnson. Bob Roper, Fire Chief. Just to give you an update on the fire, when the fire broke out on Wednesday, we knew that there's a grave potential for loss of structures into the communities that it was going to threaten. This is the same area that we were trying to keep the fire from 2003 from jumping the freeway and burning into the fuel bed. The fuel bed between Simi and Thousand Oaks is the China Flat area, has not burnt since the 1970s. So we knew it was ripe for a fire. Early on, when we knew that there was a grave potential, we availed ourselves to a new process that FEMA started about five years ago. It's called the FMAG. It's a Fire Management Assistance Grant. Under there, we have to file immediate documents to document how many homes are threatened, the severity of the threat, the population served, and the cost estimate. So my fiscal staff met with the LA County and LA City fiscal staffs. They put the document together on the 118 freeway at Topanga as it was closed down. They're putting it all together. There was a representative from State OES who came on scene, took the documentation. He got it faxed to Washington DC. The FEMA Director, Dave Paulson, within six to about seven hours later, they made the declaration. Okay? It's a new process that is an immediate action for us so that we know we're being reimbursed. It helps on the requesting of assisting outside agencies, that they will be reimbursed. And so that's where we are. But the FMAG process only reimburses us for 75% of our actual cost. And then it deals somewhat with some of the watershed protection issues, but not everything associated with roads and so forth. So some of our costs are covered. At that time, because of the severity of the fire, I also requested the sheriff to do a local declaration in preparation if the fire was to get to such a severe size that the board would ratify it and we could possibly push it out to the governor and also to the presidential declaration. I'm pleased to say that as far as the damage to structures, even though three homes were lost in the Ventura County area, that we didn't lose more homes because there was a potential for many, many homes to be lost during this fire. There was a fire flank at one time, about 15 miles long, circling from Box Canyon clear over into North Ranch area. And that is something that's unheard of, and trying to deploy enough resources to cover that is really a tough task. The situation worked really as well as can be expected with the dynamics that was happening together with the Red Cross. I placed a phone call on Wednesday to Jason Smith of the Red Cross to let him know that this was, we're going to need many shelters open. He pulled the plug and got that working. It worked well. And then working together with law enforcement on the evacuation potentials so that when we told them what area needed to be evacuated, law enforcement worked as well as the fire departments, law enforcement. It was Ventura County Sheriff, LA County Sheriff, and LAPD all worked together too to get the law enforcement and the evacuations done. So together, it was truly a team effort that resulted in the minimized damage. The one thing that yesterday that we ended up with, we had a new fire that started yesterday in Simi, south of Simi Valley toward the fire. It was interesting because two of the incident commanders from the fire were on an observation ship, saw the new smoke. The ship, it was basically a jet ranger, went down, and they saw a gentleman in the brush. They immediately saw a Simi PD police officer. They landed on the road, picked up the police officer, put him in the copter, went up to the fire. The police officer got out, maced the individual, arrested him, then the sheriff's helicopter came in, and everybody worked together and the person's been arrested. And so that's unknown if that gentleman is associated with any of the other fires. Right now, the other fires are all under investigations, and actually, the Topanga fire is under the authority of the Los Angeles County Fire and Sheriff's Department at this time. This fire, like Laura said, is about 95% contained. Full containment should happen tonight. We still are concerned with any embers on the inside with the strong east winds blowing them outside, so extensive efforts have been done to mop up. We use aircraft with forward-looking infrared devices to map, and then what they do is they fly over the fire, they use GPS coordinates to identify where the hotspots are. Those are given to ground crews, and they go in and they take the lat and the long information and they work out those hotspots. So we're doing everything we can, but it's not 100% when you have 60 mile an hour winds. That may happen. This fire is going to come under more public scrutiny at the Sacramento level because the cost of this fire, for a short-duration fire, is going to hit... It's already at 12 and 1/2 million for suppression costs. It'll probably hit the 15 million. And with that, the Department of Finance will be involved and will be auditing the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protections budget and why did this fire cost so much? And so we will have to answer back to that, but this is a natural offshoot. Because of this fire and what worked and what didn't, we will be commissioning an after-action report, and this may take us about 120 days to finish, but I will be forwarding that back to your board for information on what worked and what areas that we do need to improve on because even though our losses were minimal, is that we have areas that we still need to work on. I'm available if you have any questions.
Supervisor Michaels?
Not really a question, just, I guess, a comment first to the what could have been another incident. I was informed by Simi Valley Police Chief about the incident. And talk about luck. You know, it's one of those things where the aircraft was already there and spotted it early, and also, they were able to apprehend the person who did resist arrest was throwing rocks at the helicopter. I'm not sure what... That's like throwing a Snickers bar, you know? But through everybody's rapid reaction and cooperation, you know, getting the police officer there to make the arrest was phenomenal. And I think more importantly, on the large fire, I sincerely hope that we are not a victim of our own success and the professionalism of the fire personnel. And that is that because we didn't lose more structures, we don't get a declaration. And that would truly be a sad thing because the costs and the potential damage, even down the road, you know, we're facing rainy seasons again after a major fire, debris, mudslides, all of that. And so I hope that, like I said, we're not a victim of our own success, and I think all of us will continue to work to get the governor's office to make a declaration. Final comment, and I was going to do this under board comments, but since the chief and all of the personnel are here, that was an absolutely phenomenal effort on everyone's part. I was out there several times watching the fire come right up over the hill, and the amount of personnel and resources that were thrown at that is truly amazing. The coordination is truly amazing. And during the press conferences, the one thing, two things you heard over and over and over again were unified command and defensible space. And I think those are two of the things we walk away with, that unlike in Katrina, we had a unified command. We had people reacting. We had a plan. We had a plan every morning. We had a plan every noon time, every hour of every day while it was going on. And so to the chief, who I believe has been a longtime leader in making this work, making the unified command work, I thank you. The chief was involved, as I was, with the Blue Ribbon Commission after the last time my district burned. I'm getting a little tired of this. As an aside, I told the LA Fire Chief the same thing, when he reminded me that both of those fires started in LA. And I said, "Well, why don't you keep them there?" And I said, "Well, why don't you keep them there?" Very nice gentleman, very dedicated professional, and it was good to see all of the personnel, CDF as well. Simi Valley, I believe both of the cities, the city managers and their personnel cooperated in a unified way as well. And so, again, kudos to us and to all of the professionals, men and women out there, be they firefighters or law enforcement. CHP was involved for traffic control. It was just amazing. So thank you, chief. Good job.
I just have to comment too, just to say how impressive the response was. We were a model for the nation, and if you think about where the US stands in the world, we were a model for the world in this response. The speed of that fire went from, I think in just a couple hours, from 7,000 acres to like 17,000 acres. You just realize how the winds were kicking up. And then the amount of information that was processed by that unified command, learning about how the weather is different on one side of the freeway from the other side of the freeway, having all that information, and the incredible pinpoint accuracy of the water drops. It was just amazing. And I was in the paper saying how unbelievable that we didn't lose any houses in Bell Canyon watching that, you know, live on television. It was just incredible to see. And in the aftermath, watching, looking at how the hills all around the homes were completely burned. It was an amazing effort. It took a lot of bravery too. You know, you think the firefighters would back up at some point, and they didn't. They were aggressive, and the residents are so appreciative. I'm delighted to hear that we may have the arsonist in custody. I know, obviously, there's that, he's innocent until proven guilty, but the idea that someone could be setting these fires is just, is something to enrage people when you see what effect it had. And in terms of the $15 million that may have been as a cost for the fires, that amount of resources that was put to the fire saved it from being hundreds of millions of dollars in loss. And so, we have nothing but appreciation for the mutual aid that was given by other counties, and the governor certainly should reinforce that action, not let costs be one of the factors when people need firefighters in their county. We need to make sure that the governor does declare this a disaster so that we do get those funds. My thanks to you, and I just, we all see each other work here, we see our county council work here. To see you at work and your men at work and women, I, it was very awesome, and I have a lot of deep respect for what you do. Thank you.
One final note. It was blowing hard when I left home this morning. So don't let up.
Fortunately, it was, unfortunately. I think frankly, the governor should pay us for the proactive, aggressive work that was done. We should be paid interest on the 15 million and the homes that were saved. Exactly, a bonus pay for a job well done. Mr. Johnson wants to say something, and then certainly our public health officer.
You know, when things go well, it's hard for people to fully appreciate what goes into it and how well we do. And, you know, I wanted to recognize the sheriff's office, Laura's office, and the command post, as well as the fire service, the way in which, the amount of information and the coordination and collaboration that goes on with these people, you know, we've said it before, and in recent time, we've seen how it doesn't work in some parts of the country, so we are truly fortunate to have the quality of services we have here. And some people were saying, "Well, everybody's out there high-fiving how we have it together." You never know in a disaster, just like, you know, a lot of the criticism that went on in the hurricanes is really not legitimate because, the reason they call them disasters is because so much is unforeseen, but to the degree we can prepare for it and to the cooperation that we get from all the departments, but in particular, public safety, the sheriff's office, and the fire service, I think we should all feel blessed.
Absolutely. I think there's always lessons to learn, and we should never stop looking at best practices. We talked about that at the disaster council meeting last week. Dr. Levin?
Madam Chairperson, supervisors, Mr. Johnson, the role that public health played in all of this is pales in comparison, of course, to what the fire department did and the sheriff's office with OES. But if you will indulge me for just a moment, I would like to just talk about the modest contributions that we made. Overall, the purpose of the healthcare agency DOC, which we set up, is to provide a centralized source of information related to health issues and to be able to dispatch or facilitate healthcare and related services to any location in the county where it's needed at the time during such an event. Public health, nurse, health assessments for patients and safety evaluations at three Red Cross emergency shelters were provided. We assessed and provided health support to Alzheimer's and special needs patients in the emergency shelters. Logistical assistance to locate skilled nursing facilities and board and care bed availability in collaboration with long-term care services of Ventura County for our high-risk, vulnerable elderly population were provided, and we found 87 skilled nursing facility beds available for transfer. We ensured that lines of communication among partnering agencies and OES were maintained around the clock, and we staffed our DOC around the clock. And we conducted ongoing hospital status polling and bed availability and emergency room impact studies, and we made health advisory recommendations, mostly in regards to air pollution, to the public and to OES, including school sporting events, utilizing print as well as broadcast media. So thank you very much for your support. It was felt by everybody as this process went on.
And thank you.
Madam Chair, just a quick editorial for Dr. Levin, and I by no means meant to slight the service that was provided by public health, because I was at the shelter in Simi a couple of times, and the people were so grateful that they were getting reports on air quality and on their own health. And there were several children in there, two of whom were asthmatic. And so, the nurse was there, and they felt very much relieved. And the shelter that was set up in Simi was a bird's eye view from the fire as it came over the hill, and the wind shifted and started blowing all of that smoke toward the center. And so, the children that were in that center, the parents were having to make a decision as to whether they should move or not because the two children were asthmatic. And so, they just were ever so grateful and said time and again, "Thank you, thank you, thank you" for all of the assistance. And so, I think that, you know, if you could pass that on to your direct personnel, they were greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does that cover it? Sheriff Brooks, we thank you and your teams for, as always, working cooperatively with all the response teams in this fire. Thank you so much. And be safe out there. Johnny wants one more comment.
Yeah, one more point, not only with public health, but one of the things that your board should be pleased with and proud of, and it's not often recognized, you know, the difference between having been a city manager and a county manager. You know, cities have their role, but when it comes to situations like we've just faced, the county role, when you turn your radio on and you listen to the people and the experts that are called upon, whether it be during lock and cheetah or the fire, it are your county administrators, and one that should not, we should not pass by without commenting, something that most people don't think about, particularly with wildfires, is animal control. The kind of work with the, you know, as you know from our budget, there's very few, there are very few people there, and our director Kathy Jenks, I don't think got to even go home for like three days, seemed to it that the animals were cared for. And while a lot of people say, "Well, okay, you know, that's not such a big deal," but I'm sure the fire service recognizes historically, when you have these wildfires, in the Malibu fire back in the 70s, you know, trying to get the animals out and getting them to safety. One of my neighbors was a firefighter at the time, who in removing animals from a burning barn was kicked, went, broke a leg, went home, went to the hospital, was checked out, sent home that night, and died from a blood clot caused by that. The amount of, the hazard to law enforcement, both fire, police, as well as our animal control officers, is truly, you know, something that people never, never think about until it goes wrong. But things went right this time, and I think that we should all be pleased with the quality, including public works, you know?
And I might, I might point out that if, if you get the animals out, it's easier to get the people out, because you have a complication if the animals.
Yeah, they won't leave without them.
If you don't have an animal reg there, makes it easier to get the people out also. Yeah, thank you.
We thank you. Thank you, and obviously, we'll be working ahead and be safe. All right, that, that was the special addendum item. We're going to move at this time to a public comments, and we have cards submitted for public comment, and I would invite up first Todd Haynes.
I'm Todd Haynes. I'm a councilman from Oak Park. I'm the current chairman of the Oak Park Municipal Advisory Council. As you may recall, just last week, I was here the day before the fire started with the Westlake Agura Girls softball team, and eight of those girls were right in the fire zone, and that's why I'm here. I'm here to say just simply, thank you. Very apropos that Chief Roper was here, I was happy to be able to thank him. At around, just the proactive steps taken by the county just shows how competent this county really is, and we are very appreciative of it. Before I knew there was a fire, I got an email from my county supervisor, Linda Parks, letting me know that there was a fire and telling us, "Let the residents know what's going on." As a result of that, one is the residents weren't shocked when the fire ultimately got to Oak Park, which I think made a big difference. And the mutual aid agreements that you had, the fourth dot, to put in place, and the green belts that you put in place, I think saved many homes, including my own, which was within 100 yards of the fire. On my one block, I said to Supervisor Parks, I said, "It's not a good sign when you wake up, you look out, and you have CNN parked in your front lawn."
No, no.
In my one, I guess the word is unified command, I didn't, I didn't know the term of it, term for it, but in my one block, working together, was, I had to write it down, was in addition to the County of Ventura Fire Department and our sheriff department, was a truck from the city of Ventura, a truck from the city of Oxnard, Santa Ana, Anaheim, a strike team from Tulare, La Mida, and San Bernardino, and that was just on one block. And they were all working together. And I think that that's a testament to what I now know is called unified command, and we really appreciate the fourth dot in putting that in place. I had heard yesterday on the news that they say that about 2,000 homes were saved as a result of the work by the fire people. I assume that probably my house was included in that count. It was just simply unbelievable, and the residents of Oak Park are just so appreciative of what really you did. The buck stops, as Terry Truman, the buck would stop with the five of you, one way or the other, and in this way, it stops in a very positive way. We simply say, "Thank you. We've complained in the past at our meetings, our MAC meetings, we don't get enough service in Oak Park." Well, you're not going to hear that complaint from us for a long time. We got overload, and thank you. I know that Chief, Chief Brooks, you met with our girls last Tuesday here, and thank you very much, because a lot of the residents were woken up by the sheriff. I don't know how the sheriff's department got around so quickly, but almost everyone throughout Oak Park was notified before the fire reached their doorstep, and just thank you very much.
Thank you for coming here this morning to express that. It is appreciated.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Carol Dean Williams?
Carol Dean Williams, 60-year resident Ventura, and since Sheriff Brooks is in the audience, I'll take this rare opportunity. Today, at 8:09 AM, I delivered to him a request for a simple yes or a simple no from our county-elected sheriff. Attached to that is Captain Frank O'Halloran's adamant lies and cover-up of an investigation that transcripts and audio tape exist that Connor Dix, Frank O'Halloran, captain of Professional Standards Bureau, and I'm asking Sheriff Brooks to put his name, since he's the sheriff, I want his name on there. Talk to Sergeant West, Sheriff Brooks. Sergeant West has the evidence in his hands. Are those three sheriff deputies innocent that's been arrested for stealing county property that the county auditor notified me of much before? And now, three of them have been arrested, but we will say they're innocent till proven guilty? Stealing his own deputy, stealing and arrested, and get special treatment for arraignment? So Sheriff, if you could just give me yes or no? Johnny Johnson was having trouble with his electronic technology. I guess I'm having trouble with my, here it comes. Oh, darn. Maybe I can help you with it, Carol Dean.
[laughing]. [inaudible] with the crime officer, Sheriff police, I would like to give you a message if you have received your letter about your criminal complaint against the city manager, Rick Cole. Again, if you want to file a crime report, you need to call us, we can either come out to your house, or you come in here to the police department, and we'll have an officer speak to you there. If you do have evidence, which is a tape, go on, bring that along with you. This needs to be done in person, not via email through the panel. So give me a call, 339-4416, and let me know what you would like to do. Thank you.
That's Lieutenant Vance of the Ventura Police Department, giving a citizen, me, instructions on how to file a criminal complaint against the city manager for threatening me over the phone, and it's on this CD too. Sheriff Brooks, what's your procedure for me filing a criminal complaint against your officers that has committed crimes? What's your procedure, Sheriff Brooks? You won't tell me your procedure for me to file a criminal complaint against your sheriff deputies that are criminals? Johnny, there's the correction, you have all these papers. I'm not getting an answer on the library. I just went to the library. This is March 29th, 1989, April 22nd, 1989. Your library has stored on microfilm 12 years of libel printed against me by Scripps Newspapers. And Joe Howery, the present editor of Scripps, I'm wanting an answer, Johnny. My patience has run out. I want an answer on that microfilm. Will you please do that? You made me a promise. You've got all the material. At the least, bring before this board that Mr. Williams has produced evidence beyond question that it was false. It is false, and it's in your library. Will you do that? You've put me off a little bit too long. You've got the material. Will you do that, and when will you do that?
Thank you, sir. Lynn Krieger?
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. Just very quickly, I know by now you all have heard, unfortunately, we also had 10 Oxnard fire trucks in the harbor on Sunday morning from about 1:00 in the morning until about 5:00 in the afternoon. This gives you some idea of the damage, I'll leave this. There were, and you might, just as a quick aside, I'd be interested to know that with everything else that's going on, Chief Roper let me know that he made time yesterday to come around this building and take a look at what had happened, although this is an Oxnard City fire responsibility, so I really appreciate that. We've had a good partnership on our waterside service. There are 10 to 15 businesses affected here, and the county would have probably played a smaller role, except that both of the owners, Fred Binger, who many of you know, was in Idaho, and Steve Binger, his son, who runs this property, was on a cruise ship and unable to get off. I just talked to him again at 8:00 this morning. He was in Port of Ayer waiting for a plane, and he is on his way back. I also want to tell you that we have some real appreciation for the business owners here, many of whom have been longtime harbor tenants, who were very accommodating and gracious, given their bad circumstances. I also wanted to tell you about your own county employees, who, of course, you can't demand that people volunteer, but within an hour of the call going out, half of our maintenance crew had shown up with a couple of trucks, I'll back up here, and helped, particularly the CPA and the attorney on site, you see all of the materials piled up, retrieve their computers, their hard drives, their computer disks, and their files, and they were relocated to Fisherman's Wharf. I have to tell you, we have no leases, we have no insurance from them. We just set them up with tables, folding chairs, donuts, temporary phones, and let them start sifting through their materials, because they have documents that really had to be protected. Anyway, half the maintenance crew did show up. Our events person showed up and arranged for the security guards for the owner. My assistant director showed up with sandwiches for the business owners, because, of course, none of them would ever leave, and water, and I have to tell you, I was really touched by their concern, because they're really not responsible for all of that, but they did it anyway. Most of the businesses have been relocated. It's very temporary. They are working. You probably saw that in the paper this morning. Mr. Heitman, who works with us, was starting to show them space either elsewhere in the harbor, awaiting Mr. Binger's return today. Meetings with the insurance companies have already happened. A structural engineer will be in today to shore up portions of the building, to get as much out as can be gotten out, and the Coastal Commission's already been contacted to speed up the rebuilding of this facility. So I think you'll see some fairly speedy work done here, but you can see, as I said, I'll leave it from the level of damage. The entire building has been red-tagged and will be coming down, so all of the businesses will need to be relocated, and all but one of them have said they demand that they stay within the harbor area, so we're very, very pleased with that. So thank you very much, and thank you for your continued support. You probably all remember, we've been working with this particular lessee for about a year and a half now to redo their lease, which is scheduled to go to the Harbor Commission on October 17. We are continuing with that plan, and it should be to you on October 25 for your action for the rebuilding of the majority of that leasehold over a period. It was supposed to be over a period of several years, but I guess this building is now coming first. Wasn't the intention.
Question, does the Coastal Commission have a process that they can do, an expediting of a permit, in this case for rebuild?
Yes, they do, and in fact, you know, one of the things they have always asked us for, as we now rewrite and amend the Public Works Plan, is that the county should take on to itself repair replacement and catastrophic loss replacement, instead of leaving it to them, which is what we've done in our current Public Works Plan. So there is a waiver process that we can go through if the building's going to be replaced as is, which is the plan right now, and the city's already involved as well, so we'll try and move it as quickly as we can.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you. And again, thanks to our response teams, and thanks to Oxnard for taking care of what they had to do. Next, I'd invite Hugh Ralston up. Mr. Ralston asked if he might speak on an item on the agenda because of his busy calendar this morning, and I assured him that would be fine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the board. Mr. Johnston, I just wanted to briefly make some comments in relation to item 26 that's coming up that relates to the Children's Health Initiative. And while it's not our position to recommend something that's coming from public health, we did want to share a little bit of enthusiasm for the process that's underway with the Children's Health Initiative Steering Committee. As president of the Community Foundation, I am pleased to work with a number of colleagues in the nonprofit community to sit on that steering committee, which is currently being facilitated by David Smith from the United Way, who I believe is going to be chatting or making comments later this morning. It is a broad representative effort that brings a number of different community leaders together and is engaged in a process of deliberative dialogue that I think you will find supportive and encouraging as the county grapples with its own responsibilities through public health, and Supervisor Bennett and Supervisor Long are both sitting on the committee and have been active in the dialogue. The steering committee has been meeting monthly. Our process is such that we are trying to understand the magnitude of the problem before jumping to solutions. We are engaging some analytical research to be able to come up with some alternatives that we hope are grounded in fact. The Community Foundation has made a modest grant, only because our unrestricted resources are modest, not because we don't believe it's important, to fund the development of a business plan for a Children's Health Initiative in the county that clearly would be developed in recognition of the important role that public assets have in this particular process. And it is our hope that this fall, we will be able to hire a consultant to help determine the magnitude of the need, the magnitude of the financing, and the possibilities of recruiting, funding both inside the county and outside the county to help ensure that we can move closer to the goal that I think everyone on the steering committee, and I'm sure the board and public health believes is important, which is to provide access to health resources for children in Ventura County. It is currently the expectation that the steering committee will wait until we get responses back from our analytical studies and from the business plan study before we make a determination of what is the right way to go forward in supporting the work of the county. But it is clear that the activity of the Public Health and the Human Services Department over the last six months has been focused on trying to improve what is a complex problem in having children access insurance that exists and access services that exist. And my purpose here today is to encourage the board to move forward on this and to share the enthusiasm of the steering committee that we can continue in working together, find ways to move us closer to a goal that I think all of us are supporting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming this morning and your comments. Thank you. All right, board members, that's the end of the public comments that have been submitted, so we'll go to board comments and, I lost track, what end I start at? Oh, sure, in the middle. That's Mr. Johnston. No, Supervisor Bennett.
Be happy to, happy to show leadership today at the comment time. First, I'd like to ask the board to remember of the people on this list. I also attended the service for Diane Vogelbaum this past weekend with Supervisor Long and our CEO, Johnny Johnson, and I think the, I think the, I think the party is probably the best way to describe it, because that's what they really wanted to emphasize, really did help capture Diane Vogelbaum's life so well, and she will, as the person who's filling her job at Rain said, "I will not fill her shoes. I'm not going to try to fill her shoes. That's impossible to do." Pretty remarkable woman, and let's hope that Rain stays healthy under this new leadership and that that spirit of Diane Vogelbaum will continue to motivate all the other people that are working so hard to make Rain a success. The other board comment that I'd like to turn my attention to is to publicly make a request regarding Highway 33. Highway 33 is a state highway, and the repair work on Highway 33 at Arness Grade is coordinated by the state, and they have done very good work in terms of repairing that, some pretty interesting engineering, and they got close to finished, and a number of weeks ago, they stopped work. And they've done virtually all of the heavy lifting, all of the really expensive stuff is paid for, but they somehow have an inability to shuffle funds from one pot to another, and they've run out of funding right here at the end, and for weeks, nothing has happened on the project, and the project is still down to two lanes, and it forces people out. It's not as safe as it will be when they finally finish it, and my, we have been calling multiple times, and we keep getting assured, next week, the work will start back up, and next week, the work will start back up. The winter rainy season is approaching, and this work, when it does start back up, looks like it's going to take about six weeks, and so I just am respectfully, publicly requesting that Caltrans and our state representatives promptly do whatever it takes to solve the problem, so that we don't have a project that is 95% complete, stop and sit on hold for months and months and get us into the rainy season where it will be harder to solve the problem, because they're going to be working on the hill right there. So, appreciate the work that they've done up to this point in time, but expressing, we have a lot of people in the public contacting us, expressing concern that the project has been delayed for so long. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Flynn.
Yes, ask the board to remember in memory of the people on the list. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Michaels.
Yes, thank you. I made most of my comments earlier while the fire chief and Laura from OES, and the sheriff and the under sheriff were here. In regards to the fire, one kind of editorial, I was in my office in Sme Valley in a meeting, and I had my back to the window, and the people that I were meeting with said, "Looks like you've got a fire." I said, "Oh, no, they put that out this morning." That was the first fire near Porter Ranch. And they said, "I don't think so," and I turned around, and I watched that fire grow from a single column of white smoke to absolute black for two days, and my office faces southeast, my window, and I'm not that far from the 118. And to see that, and to watch it grow, and to start hearing airplanes and helicopters almost immediately, and fire trucks running up and down the 118 was just an amazing situation. And through the night, the sky, as I'm sure Linda saw on her side of the fire, was bright orange, heavy with smoke. People were trying to move animals and themselves, and being able to watch the coordination of that was, made me just extremely proud once again of this county. And as a lot of you know, I work with the National Regional Council's Association, and we are light-years ahead in this county of what the others are prepared to do, and so thank you for allowing me to go to those meetings and puff up my chest and say, "We're already doing that," and if you'd like, I'll give you the email address of my sheriff and my fire and OES, and you can talk to them on how we do it and how well. Having said that, I think Supervisor Long made the critical comment earlier, we cannot sit on our laurels, we can always do better. And, you know, I'm committed, I know the board is, and I certainly know our professionals are, to continue to find better and better ways to save structures and to save lives in fires. And somebody said on the news, "It's not if we have another fire, it's when we have another fire." So we need to be prepared. Thank you to the citizens who follow the rules for clearance, for defensible space, for how the homes are built and protecting those homes, and for being so cooperative during what was going on. I did not get one bad call. I did not talk to anybody in law enforcement. There were probably some, but I didn't talk to anybody who complained that people were not cooperating. They said everybody was cooperative. I was up at the Knowles Fire Station on Thursday, and Animal Control came by, and he said that he had four horse trailers on their way. Did I know how many horses still needed to be evacuated? So we were on it, and I'm proud. Thank you all. My final comment is I would ask that the board adjourned in memory of these citizens from the 4th District, both of whom served our nation in the military, one in World War II and one in Vietnam. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I wanted to mention, I guess this coming weekend is SOAR's 10-year celebration, and we have SOAR in place in most of the cities in the county, in the unincorporated area. It's doing its job, protecting us from sprawl, so it's amazing to see it's been 10 years already. I guess the gray hairs are starting to show, and that's this coming weekend. Also, I wanted to mention that the Triumphant Sanitation District and the Los Virginus Municipal Water District are actually starting to come to some agreement with the L.A. Regional Water Quality Control Board. At our last meeting yesterday, we were discussing an agreement, and that is such a better position than suing, and that was kind of where I saw the people lining up, so hopefully, we will be able to do something that will work for us both. And then also, I can't help but talk about the fire. I'm looking at putting together a community meeting for, forum for both Bell Canyon and then also for Oak Park. Residents there got to witness firsthand the response. They have some recommendations. They also have a lot of appreciation. I know that I visited both the shelter out in Canoga Park that had people from Bell Canyon attending, and just being able to make sure that they have information, how important that is, I have found, you know, that having information really helps. I know that it was reported on one news station that several houses, and they named a particular street in Bell Canyon, had been lost to the fire, and people were just, you know, they couldn't go in, they couldn't see, and being able to have the communication with our fire chief and having them do an assessment the next day, and being able to provide accurate information was so helpful for the residents of finding that actually no houses were burned. But you do see some irresponsible journalism out there sometimes when they're reporting erroneous information. And then also going to the Thousand Oaks Shelter and seeing that we had a whole convalescent home, pretty much had to evacuate to the Thousand Oaks Center, which was the park there. And fortunately, someone, probably not for her, but Agura Hills was also, an old part of Agura, was evacuated, and a physician was evacuated, and she was actually helping to attend, so there were some nice situations there that helped out. The Caneo Valley has an equestrian rescue organization that was right there, offering trailers, and the park district allowed for the use of their park for horses to be placed and other animals and llamas and things, as well as Pierce collars. It's just a tremendous response, the community, from the search to the dart, to the search and rescue, to our sheriff, the CHP, being able to help in evacuation, and we had so much cooperation among residents to evacuate that you didn't see too many holdouts there, and people got out of the way of the fire department and let them do their business when they can evacuate. There were still lucky loos in here and there that I think people would have preferred weren't there, but all in all, I think we have a lot to be proud of, and these community forums that I'm looking forward to. It's a good ability to look and see what we did right, and also take suggestions on where else we can go, so I'm looking forward to that. I also wanted to ask that we close in honor of a couple of people on this list, including Craig Glasser, Diane Glasser's young son in his 30s, and I believe he just died of a heart attack, and it's just so unfortunate to see someone cut down in midlife like that, and he'll be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't add much more to the appreciation to our response teams in the fires, and just to make an additional comment on the shelters that were set up by Red Cross, and as we all know, Red Cross has been stretched thin nationwide, and our local Red Cross chapter has been very engaged in that national response to Katrina, but they also understand the importance of serving this community, and they did an outstanding job in setting those shelters up. outstanding job in setting those shelters up. I was online with emails and communications throughout the last few days, and I understand they certainly will be there as called upon, as we look at some weather anticipation in front of us. But appreciation to Red Cross, appreciation to all of the community public members who have stepped forward in support of, of the Katrina response, and, and supporting the Red Cross work through the Katrina response, and certainly call on residents to continue that support. The Disaster Relief Fund that Red Cross maintains is that broad umbrella that, that they use for responses, such as what they've gone through here recently with the shelter and the homes in, in our county. So, there's always room for additional support, and, and I know that folks in this community have been so generous in that support, and charity begins at home, but people have opened their arms and their, and frankly, their wallets generously to, to expand that home boundary into the disaster area of Katrina and Rita. So, it's appreciated by Red Cross, and I'd like to say that. If I could add a couple of good news things, or maybe happy things to do, I've been asked to, to talk about a couple of events going on in our county this weekend. We, we hope that they'll be able to continue on, and one is at the Fairgrounds on Saturday, and it's the Highland Games, and it's a celebration of Scotland and Scottish festivities. And on behalf of the board, I'll be out there with a resolution to celebrate the Highland Games, and that's at the Fairgrounds again on Saturday. Harbor Days in Port Oneimi, Saturday and Sunday, celebration of our, of our wonderful community of Port Oneimi, but also the harbor, and, and that's always a real fun community activity. And then Early California Day's Fiesta, Rancho Camulus, Saturday, October 8th, from 10:00 to 4:00. And that is really to celebrate the National Hispanic Heritage Month, to honor the first families of Santa Clara Valley, families who settled prior to 1905. And the Rancho Camulus docents and leadership team have really reached out to the community to identify those families and invite them to this, and it's just a great time to have food, fun, dancing, and song. So, if you have an opportunity to want to have some fun this weekend, I'd invite you to drop in on any and all of those. I'm going to try to make all of them, which ought to be a challenge. And I'd ask the board to adjourn in memory of an individual in Santa Paulos, certainly going to be missed. And that concludes the board comments. Any further comments? All right. We are on time with our 9:30 time certain items. So, if we might move to the first one, which is, I will be presenting a proclamation proclaiming October 8th, and I'm looking for my, October 8th through the 16th, it's California-Mexico Bi-National Health Week, and it is my pleasure to do so, invite the board in the celebration of doing so. And I know that we have present, I saw him come in, there he is, Fernando Gamboa, our Mexican council, if you'd like to step to the front, please. And Elvia Gisar is with him, and whoever else you brought with you, please invite them down, Mr., or Council, as we celebrate the California-Mexico Bi-National Health Week, and I'll present some of the information from the resolution and step down to present that. This is a collaborative program of California and Mexican agencies, and the objective is to coordinate our efforts to improve the quality of life of the Mexican origin population in the United States and the families in Mexico, expanding access to health care and services. And by coordinating this 5th Annual Bi-National Health Week, the activities in California will be centered in selected counties with a high concentration of Mexican migrants and immigrants, and we are one of those counties that will be celebrating the event. It is certainly our desire to participate in this week by offering health care services, education, outreach, and screening services, and providing opportunity to highlight the need to improve the health care for migrants and immigrants in our county and throughout California. So, as we celebrate and recognize October 8th through the 16th, we also encourage residents to support and participate in the events that will recognize this important event, and I would invite you, council, to please speak to what activities will take place. I'll step down to present this.
Certainly. Thank you, Kathy. Kathy Long, Chairman, Linda Parks, John Flynn, Steve Bennett, Judy Michaels, members of the board of supervisors, Mr. John Johnson. For five years consecutives, our countries have had the opportunity to sustain a political dialogue for programs to improve the quality of life of this community. We are talking about the physical and mental health of this population at both sides of the border. At the same time, to engage in a dynamic dialogue and establish bi-national commitments to increase available resources that will not be eliminated by other political priorities is yet another challenge. As the Mexican Secretary of Health, Dr. Friend, stated, "Health is not everything, but if there is no health, there is nothing." This message should be the driving force to redirect resources to the Mexican origin migrant population that contribute a lot to the economy and well-being of Mexico, California, and the United States. Every institution is judged by its elected representatives. Ventura County has been most fortunate in its officers. They have been loyal men and women of the very best judgment and of high character. I have been here several times, but every occasion has been a special and different I am really happy, I am really happy for this opportunity to add my personal expression of gratitude for your sincere and devoted effort for this resolution to support the health of the community at large. Thanks for the bottom of my heart.
Good morning, Honorable Ventura County Supervisors. Ventura County has participated in the Bi-National Health Week since 2002, thanks to Paula Rens' support, who at that moment, he was my supervisor, and as I work for the Public Health Department, it's community outreach and education at that moment. Honestly, I want to acknowledge, I'm kind of short. Thank you for giving us this acknowledgement to the 5th Bi-National Health Week. I must say that health cast, health access and status within our communities continue to challenge health care, as well as our own health care providers. Health challenges such as a few use key preventive services. Bi-National Health Week is one of the many accomplishments of the Bi-National, the California-Mexico Health Initiative, which is started in the year 2001, and since then, today, 33 counties in California participate, 17 states in Mexico, 26 states in the United States, as well as three provinces in Canada. Numbering almost 27 million nationwide Mexican-Americans and Mexican-americans, as Council Fernando Gamboa had mentioned, given this population contribution, as he also mentioned, of both countries, the health status and their access to care is a bilateral responsibility. That is why Bi-National Health Week is, has united and recognizes these realities. Bi-National Health Week, as Kathy Long, thank you Supervisor Kathy Long, has mentioned that it is a week long of health promotion activities. Locally, we have over 102 because we actually cover, as the Mexican covers all three counties. This year, I'm pleased to say that we also have the Ventura County Medical Center residents helping, the Ventura College nurses, students helping in these endeavors. We have clinical screenings all the way from agricultural camps. We have, for first time this year, we're actually going to also target education. We have our Magnum Conference, which you're all cordially invited to participate in this year, it will take place in the Santa Barbara County. One of the things that I also want to mention is that within our, each county has local task force to make this happen. We have over 50 agencies collaborating. All the clinical screenings from cholesterol, from anemia, from osteoporosis, from mammograms, PAF screenings, you name it, it's all a key preventive measure that we use as far as also education. We unite with public health, we unite with many, 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 many organizations, so many out there. Why? Because one of the things that has happened is that with the data facts that we have, we, we address the health data indicators, because California-Mexico Health Initiative starts at Berkeley University. We get the leadership and the guidance, support from them. We have medical doctors right now as we speak doing bilingual exchange programs, UCLA being the leader right now. We have promoters that also do an exchange with the promoters at, in Mexico. We have actually programs that have addressed the needs of this population, and we plan to present all those programs. This is only a few things that I mentioned to you that will happen. As you know, I mentioned over 100 events. We have a roundtable discussion to address the indigenous populations with Sandy Yang, as you may know, who's, myself and her started the Misteco Indigenous Community Organizing Project with the support again of Paula Rens', our Public Health Director. Public Health, as you know, there's a lot of things behind the scenes, but in fact, that's one of the things, as well as the promoters concept that also started in Public Health with now, the, and these organizations have taken off on its own in the communities as nonprofit organizations, but Public Health does a lot of work behind the scenes as well. One of the things that I also want to tell you is that we are, want to really approach a wellness approach on a positive level to our Mexican communities. To reduce the health burdens, alleviate health care, and as well as prevent catastrophic illnesses that we know really are a burden to our economy. The other issue was, would be is that I do want to mention that if somebody said to me, "I want to die healthy," thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And I thank you so much for continuing on with this and our support. We appreciate you working. Do you want a poster? Can we put up? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Here, we're going to take a picture. Picture, picture. Oh, I thought John was coming. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We certainly know all the work you do makes for a healthy community, and that's a benefit to all of us. We thank you so much. That's great. Okay, we're going to continue on with that theme, board members, with our next 9:30 time certain item, and that is for thinking of and working on health care. And it is my pleasure to present on behalf of the board, National Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation for October 2005, and I would invite Paula Stanfield, is she here? Yes, thank you. Please join me. I had the pleasure Saturday, as I, this is now my fourth year, of Relay for Life, and that little bear up there by my seat is the survivor bear, and as I wear the pin in honor and walk with the survivors in the Relay for Life, it really is a pleasure to continue the work, to raise the public awareness of and engage, I, I hope, the public every year, stronger and stronger in the relays, and all the work of the American Cancer Society, and the necessary work to raise funds, to support research, to find a cure. And it just is always an empowering moment, and, and to hear testimonies at the relays. The Camarillo Relay was this weekend, and I believe Oxnard's this coming weekend, and I hope you'll give us an update on activities. We heard from one of our very own deputy sheriffs who gave testimony of his two-year struggle with cancer, and his eight-month-old daughter ran around playing with the balloons in front of us, and it was very, very heartwarming, and he did a wonderful job. Outstanding turnout for the relay. But speaking to the resolution, it's certainly 20 years that the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women about early breast cancer, detection, diagnosis, and treatment. It touches the lives of many. I expect every one of us can say we know someone who has had to struggle with the illness of, of cancer, and the disease of cancer, either directly or through a family member or friend. Progress has been made in diagnosing the disease and improving treatment, eliminating breast cancer continues to though be a major goal. While overall death rates are declining, breast cancer remains the second-leading cause of cancer death among women. Clinical breast exams, mammographies are still the best ways to detect breast cancer in an early stage, and the American Cancer Society, National Cancer Institute, and the United States Preventive, Preventive Services Task Force agree that for women who are 40 or over, a mammogram every one to two years can greatly reduce the risk of dying from breast cancer. October 21st is National Mammography Day, and women are encouraged to make an appointment for their mammography. This year, more than 21,000-plus California women will develop breast cancer, and more than 4,000 California women will die from it. It is important for all Americans to raise the awareness of breast cancer in talking with family members and friends about the importance of screening and early detection cannot be stressed enough, screening and early detection. Educate ourselves, work together, improve our ability to prevent, detect, treat, and ultimately cure breast cancer. So, on behalf of the board, I'd like to present this resolution, encourage women and men of Ventura County to learn more about our disease, the disease, be proactive again, early detection practices, participate in building awareness all year long with your family members and friends, and never give up the hope. So, I'll present this on behalf of the board, and I'd like you to say a few words, and I thank you.
Yeah, I feel honored to have been asked to receive this proclamation. I'm only one of thousands of breast cancer survivors, but as Supervisor Kathy has said, it's still a leading cause of, of death in women and men. It's also a disease of men, but mainly, of course, women. So, it is very vital that we really raise the awareness level so that every woman gets her mammograms, does her self-breast checks monthly. That's how I found out that I had breast cancer, and I'm so happy I did, because otherwise I may not be a survivor. Finding it early is the true key, because there are, there's wonderful chemotherapy now, and surgery, and radiation that can, can cure it, or at least cause a lifelong remission. So, I would urge everyone to pass that information on to everybody that you know, and to take advantage yourself of early breast cancer screening, so that we can decrease the number of deaths from this, this disease, because it can be, we can survive, many of us do. And there is that the Relay for Life is this weekend in Oxnard. I'm sorry, I don't have this, I didn't know I was going to be speaking, so I didn't bring, I didn't bring the other information, I'm really sorry, but I know it is this weekend at Oxnard High School. Yeah. And they can go online to get that. So, I thank you very much for this proclamation, and keep proclaiming it to everybody you know, and we'll save a lot more lives. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Okay. Yes. We have a few minutes, and I really don't want to get into, I'd like to, if I might, board members, ask that we hold on the, what would be the regular agenda item, 26 for a minute, because I know that's going to take more time. Shall we move to item 27 and see if we can hear that before we move to our 10, 10 o'clock time certain? Would that be all right? Great. Thanks. Appreciate that, sure. Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Davis.
Good morning, Supervisor Long, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. I'm Karen Davis, Deputy Director for the Healthcare Agency and the Chief Financial Officer. On September 21st, 2005, the county became the legal owner of the former Santa Paul Memorial Hospital. Memorial Hospital. It's a great moment for the county and we're working very diligently to open that facility back up for patient care services. As such, we've done a full assessment of the facilities and determined that there's some major repairs and maintenance work that must be done prior to opening that facility back up for patient care services. The hospital has now been closed for 21 months and even prior to closing, it had not been properly maintained and has deteriorated since that time. Again, we had heavy rains last winter which caused additional damage. Some of the types of repairs that are needed at the hospital include plumbing work, electrical, roof repair, servicing the medical equipment that's out there, the fire alarms, emergency generator system, and not to mention the parking lots and the landscaping have eroded. VCMC Facilities Maintenance has invited various companies to come in at a meeting and review the maintenance project. Bids were received and quotes of the work to be performed. The companies selected that are in this board letter were chosen based on their proven performance, hospital environment experience, staffing capabilities, and most importantly, their ability to meet project deadlines. The scope of the work requirements, working conditions, and completion criteria were outlined and these vendors submitted quotes for each job. The total estimated project for the renovation of the facility to open is $3.6 million. Opening the facility is anticipated in January of 2006, so this is a very aggressive renovation project. This will provide access to medical services in Santa Paula, Fillmore, and Piru communities that long have been waiting for these services. The Healthcare Agency has also assessed the equipment that's at the facility and there does need to be made some purchases since some of the equipment has left the facility or... Yes, there were several leases that the vendors had not been paid and so we do need to replace some of the equipment for such departments as respiratory therapy, laboratory, surgery, physical therapy, food services, and some of the clinic equipment for the facility there on the hospital grounds. In sum, the purchase order contracts and fixed asset acquisitions are essential to make the hospital a safe, sanitary, and functioning hospital. The Healthcare Agency therefore requests that your board authorize the purchasing agent to execute these contracts. The total project cost for the renovations and the equipment are $4.5 million. It is requested that the project costs be financed with tax-exempt commercial paper with the option to refinance with long-term borrowings. The estimated average debt service for the $4.2 million borrowing is approximately $420,000 over a 15-year period. The financing structure will be provided and considered by the Financial Planning Committee this afternoon. Subject to the approval of the Financial Planning Committee, we request that your board approve the issuance, sale, and use of up to $4.5 million in tax-exempt commercial paper for the repair costs and equipment that is needed to open the facility. In closing, I'd like to personally thank Rosa Siniseros in purchasing and Paul Dersi in the CEO's office for their assistance in getting this letter filed. I would also like to thank your board for your continuing support over the several years that it took to negotiate the purchase of this hospital. It's going to be a great service to the community out there and the county in whole. And also we have with us several members of our agency to answer any questions that you may have about this project.
Other questions?
Madam Chair, would you like to make the motion and I'll make the second?
So moved.
Second. And just a quick comment. Supervisor Long's tenacity through this whole thing and her ability to work with not only our agency and all of our employees, but also with the communities, the communities in the Heritage Valley, in particular, the Santa Paula City Council, is to be commended and I am so proud of the Healthcare Agency and all of the effort. You know, it looks real easy when all of a sudden somebody's standing up here giving us a report and asking for approval, but I can tell you, there was head banging and hair pulling and lots of things behind the scenes to get this project this far. And everyone has heard me say it before and I'm going to say it again, our healthcare agency and the services that we provide are second to none. And I am extremely proud of our team and it is an expense, yes, but it's a necessary expense and I believe that the citizens out in the Heritage Valley and in the county as a whole will be well-served.
Thank you. Yes. Supervisor Bennett?
I just would like to point a couple of things out that I think are important for the public to be aware of as we launch this effort. And we've said it in this boardroom a number of times, but healthcare is broken in this country. It's fundamentally, completely, it is really suffering in this country. And as a result, hospitals are closing left and right around the United States, in the state of California, and you see Los Angeles is considering doing that. Many of them are running deficits, et cetera. This is the only place I know of that is opening a county hospital or opening a hospital, opening a facility, expanding a facility in this situation and opening this back up. And I think that's a remarkable achievement and it's only happening, I think, for two reasons. One, I mean, there are a number of reasons why we're doing it, but there are two things that are making it possible. And one is that we've had, at our healthcare agency, we've had pretty careful and intelligent leadership to be able to figure out this complex web of funding formulas that are out there from Medi-Cal, Medicare, reimbursement rates, DISH formula, all of that. And they have been able to manage our county healthcare system better than anybody else in the state and as a result, we don't sit here facing tens of millions of dollars of deficits every year that we're trying to dip into the general fund for. The second reason we're able to do it is because of the careful and intelligent leadership that we got from our CEO and his staff about our budget overall. If we were doing what we were doing, which was having our debt go up and our bond rating going down for the last four years, if that would have, if we would have continued in that mode, it would be much more difficult for us to bite off something like this from the standpoint of being able to sell the bonds, get a good rate, to know that we have the resources and the reserves there. We will always be cutting it close, but we have, because of this careful and intelligent leadership from the CEO's office and his staff, our overall budget is healthy enough to allow us to take this step with confidence. And I have to tell you, if it wasn't for those two things, I would not be able to say, "Let's go forward," because just biting off a hospital because it's emotionally sounds really good and doesn't, if it doesn't make financial sense, would be a real mistake for the residents of our county. So I, that, so I'm happy to go forward with this because of that and I recognize just the tremendous challenge, financial challenge that has been overcome to make this happen. So my congratulations to everybody with this.
Great. Other comments? Supervisor Flann?
Right, thank you. I see Dr. Sam back there. And if you look at all the people involved here in this issue, it's, I commend all of you. The Renaissance period of healthcare in this county began in 1986. And that's the period of time, during that period of time, we've established, what, 10 clinics throughout the county. We've established a whole new philosophy of caring for people. That is, to put the clinics out where the people are, get people enrolled so that we can maintain the health of those people rather than them arriving in the emergency room of the hospital, which is very expensive. Now the Renaissance period, which is continuing, has another hospital. And I've said this before, that while Los Angeles County is considering shutting down a hospital, Ventura County is opening a hospital. And why do we have this period like this, this Renaissance of healthcare in Ventura County? It's primarily due to the administration, to the doctors, to all the administrators, such as our past Dr. Sam, to Pierre Duran, and all the people who put this whole plan together and had the vision to look forward. So I want to commend you all. And also the board itself for creating, along with Mr. Duran, the CEO, past CEOs, a healthcare system that is second to none.
Supervisor Parks?
And when I first heard the proposal, I thought there would be no way that we could succeed in this one. And so this is one of those, another miracles that I see that has been created. And I think part of it is also the atmosphere that allows for the inspiration to come forward and for us to be able to react. I think that having, you often think of government as very bureaucratic and not being able to move like a big ship takes along, but the ability to have that kind of atmosphere that it can be brought forward and the leadership of Chair Long has helped lead the way and it was amazing to see it accomplished. And I just want to say that we're not done yet. I'm still, I'm looking at the East County.
Never give up. Thank you, board members, for those comments and it really has been the team out here that has put this together. Karen Davis has done outstanding job with the numbers on this one and making sure that that all of the list that is provided here is a genuine list, a solid list, a list that is absolutely necessary. This is, there's nothing fluff in this list. And what she said as far as, you know, neglect in the hospital prior to the two years that's been closed, there was neglect in that hospital years before it was closed that we saw, we're seeing now as we go in and start to knock some walls down and see the damage that's been there. So this is a true investment that has great support from the taxpayers in the Santa Clara Valley who, you know, this is an investment for them. It is their dollars that we're using. We're using them wisely in a priority that they have set. So I appreciate the support for it. It's a motion of second objection. Hearing none. Oh, Christine has her hand up.
Just a clarification. In, before the financing is put in place, I wanted your board to be aware that the purchase order encumbrances are being established against appropriations using VCMC's retained earnings. And that's based on the operations. I also wanted to let you know that the auditor's staff has not yet completed the cash flow projection review, but I'm sure that that will follow with the Financial Planning Committee.
Great. And I thank you. Hearing no objection. So ordered.
Congratulations Supervisor Long.
Thank you. I thank you for your excellent work. Karen, thank you. Dr. Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Sam and Mr. Johnson.
One comment to go along with the auditor's controllers' concerns. There's always the question, she and I were having an email discussion of carts before the horse or chicken and the egg kinds of analogies. The question of, do you go to finance first and then come here or do you come here and go to finance? I mean, it could be argued to go either way, but the, it's an iterative process and rather than have a joint session in the interest of trying to expedite this at your board's request, we know you were interested in it, we bring it here first, but I want to emphasize that it is subject to the Finance Committee taking a look at the financing. If we should run into any questions or problems, then we, of course, would bring it back to your board. Otherwise, we'll go forward.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we have acted on that, so ordered, and we're, I know we have a 10 o'clock and we're about two minutes into that. Could, I'd like to ask the vice chair if she would carry this one forward. Oh, no, sure, item. If you would carry this forward, but excuse me for a minute and I'll be right back, unless everyone would like a break? Anyone else say the break? Oh, never mind, we're taking a break. We'll be right back though.
We've been here since 8:30. We've been here since 8:30.
... here, financial resources of the Senior Ombudsman Program. And we have no resolution today or anything else. We just have good people that have shown up. And Shirley, or any of the members of the Board, if you have something you'd like to add, this is the time to do it.
Please, please, take the time.
Madam Chair, while she comes up, since they're asking for help in all of our areas, I'd like to introduce two from my district. Jim Stook from the City of Moore Park, who's been involved for a long time, and Michael Wesner, who's a Planning Commissioner and a longtime Kauanian, and has an interest in how this can be helped and made better and stronger, much like our foster program. So, we're already participating.
And thank you, thank you. I saw them there, and I didn't know their names completely. I knew Mike's, and I was going, I was glad that, I'm glad you introduced them. Shirley, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you Supervisor Steve so much for this presentation this morning. And I'm sitting there thinking, this may be the first time that we've had this program presented to the Board of Supervisors like this. So, thank you very much.
It's the first time in many, many years.
Probably, probably so.
Since about 1996.
All right. I've been with the program six years, so it's been before my time. I do want to thank you all for your support for this program. Two things I want to leave you with, everything we do is free, everything, and everything we do is unduplicated. So, it's very important that this program stay healthy. In the County of Ventura, we are a model for the state of California, and we want to keep it that way. So, it's much, much more difficult now than it was when me and Shirley started the program. They had 12 facilities when they set these mandates for us, and 1,200 residents. And now, we have 178 and 7,500 residents, and our funding has not increased accordingly. So, we're very grateful for the support of the County of Ventura, for the Area Agency on Aging. And I would like my Board Chair to speak to you. He's come all the way from Moore Park, across the county. And Jim has been very influential in helping us out in the county to bring recognition to this program. And I also would like Leo, our volunteer, to say a few words, if you would. Because the heart and soul of our program is the volunteers. They're our greatest asset. They go through a very intense training to become state-certified. They have to complete 12 hours a year of continuing education to maintain certification. And without them, we could not do this work. We have 50, we have 45 certified volunteers right now, and five in training. We just completed a training last week. But they are truly the heart and soul. They are our greatest resource, and our second is funding to keep this program going. So, we are deeply grateful. Thank you very much Supervisor Steve. And I'll turn this over to Jim Stook, our Board Chair.
Could I ask just one quick question? The 45 volunteers you have, are they geographically spread well across the county?
Yes.
Are there areas that we need to really focus on to generate more volunteers, or just more generally?
Actually, excellent question. Two years ago, we were very light in the East County. Now, we have so many volunteers in the East County, and now, we're light in the West County. We really need volunteers out in Ojai and Santa Paula, and out in West Ventura.
Good, thank you.
I'll turn it over to Leo.
I'll be fast. I wasn't anticipating speaking, but I thank you Supervisor Bennett and the Supervisors for acknowledging this program. As an ombudsman, it's extremely worthwhile and gratifying for me to do this. I'm in my eighth year of this, and I can't tell you the joy I get in going to these facilities. I also understand I may be there someday. All of us may be there someday. And if we are, we want ombudsman there to help us, the way we're helping people there today. I think the greatest reward I get is when I go to my facilities and I talk to each of my residents and ask them how things are going, and, "Well, they said, 'Fine, they're fine.' Is there anything I can do for you at this point, today?" And they said, "No, the most important thing you can do for me is being here, is coming, and I know you're here if I need anything." So, that's our, that's one of our real values, and it's been a wonderful program, and it's been great for me. Another good thing about when you go out to try to get ombudsman, we can, we can pick the times we go. So, that makes it easy as a volunteer. You can say, "Well, I think I'll go tomorrow." If something comes up, I can change it. We go unannounced, but it gives you flexibility in visiting, visiting the facility, visiting the facilities following your own schedule. Again, thank you for the recognition.
If I might take a moment to thank you. I had the opportunity to be a celebration in one of our care homes when Leo was present. It was for 100th birthday, and he was there as the ombudsman on that facility. And you could tell that people appreciated it, they were aware that he was there to listen to them and help them. And then, I called on him for some advice, and, not advice, but some direction. He was very helpful to me personally, and your skills have just really added to helping people. We thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Long. Thank you Supervisors.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jim Stook. I'm the Board Chair. I joined, what, four, five years ago, I guess? Five years ago, I was asked to help with an auction, and a couple of the other Board members asked if I'd ever done an auction. And I said, "Well, Boys and Girls Global Morph work, we've done a few." And they needed an auctioneer, and so, I asked Mike Wesner to be our auctioneer. And that was kind of my introduction to the long-term care operation here in Ventura County. I had a very successful auction, as I remember. And so, from there, I was asked to join the Board, and I did, only because I've gone through three grandparents where I wish I'd known about the ombudsman program. Because I did it all myself and my wife, and that's a very difficult thing to do. And now that I am aware of this program, when my mother-in-law in Texas had to go into a nursing home, the first thing I did when I walked in was I looked for the ombudsman poster, and there it was. And I brought my sister-in-laws over, and I said, "You see that 800 number? You got a problem, you call." Okay? Because I happened to be in the office, Supervisor Bennett, on your first example, and Sylvia's on the phone, making phone calls to FBI, District Attorneys, people that were answering her phone call, because this daughter was not going to get away with what was going on. And the ombudsman people had tracked it, and she had her facts, and frankly, Sylvia nailed her. And that was kind of fun. To see that kind of power, to know that the ombudsman program can actually do those things, and they do do it. And we do it very well here in Ventura County. As Sylvia said, we're a model for the rest of the state, in that we're a nonprofit organization started by me and everybody back when, and we continue to do that. And the Board is working very diligently on getting unrestricted money. Sylvia does an excellent job in getting grants. We get the grants. Grants are tough to get. They're getting a little tougher. Some of the funding that we get from area aging has been cut. So, part of what the Board's responsibility is going to be is to look for more cash flow to help us develop more volunteers. When I got on, I, and I think Supervisor Michaels knows that I came to her office, says, "You know what? They don't know we exist in the East County, you know? We need to do more." And so, we've been out kind of recruiting, and we've, as you heard, okay, we got it up. I mean, we had a guy volunteer from Moore Park who saw me before the City Council, asking for the CDVG money. And he called, said, "This sounds like something I want to do," and joined. And so, we're doing that kind of work, and we continue to do that. But the number of facilities have increased, the number of residents have increased, and we need some more volunteers, we need some more help. The Board appreciates anything that this Board can do to help us and support. And I'm certainly, Supervisor Bennett, you're, we're going to steal the PowerPoint, okay? Because what, one thing we are going to do, to let you know we're active, is that Mike is the incoming Lieutenant Governor. The Kuanis Club has what they call a priority two. Priority one's children, priority two is seniors. And we're going to be working through them, here, at least in the Ventura County area, making presentations to the clubs and asking for their support. So, I'll just let you know that we are going out into the community. We're going to be working on that and do what we can to help. So, again, thank you all for your attention and your help you're going to give us.
Great.
The program can only succeed with the dynamic duo now locked in pursuit of making things better. I can let you know how well they work together and how they get things done. Any auctions coming up?
I just wanted to tell you, our 25th anniversary is coming up next year, and we hope that many of you, or all of you, might be able to make it. We're planning, our Chairman's here today, Neil Raffler, who's on our Board, and he's planning quite an event for us. And so, we'll be keeping you informed of that. It should be our biggest fundraiser ever. I just wanted to give you a follow-up on the three cases the Supervisor Bennett told you about. The first case, the gentleman called me the other day. He's out playing golf every day. He bought himself a car, and he's living a very independent, wonderful life. The second case, the lady who was sexually assaulted, she did proceed with the encouragement of the ombudsman and did retain an attorney. She did file a lawsuit, and she won. And she, who was on social security and had hardly any money to pay for her care, has enough funds now to pay for her care for the rest of her life. The third case, we were able to move that resident into another facility. She regained total control. She recognizes her daughter now when she sees her, who she didn't know before. And those are just three cases out of many, many, many other cases that we could share with you. But again, thank you. Thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
And thank you Supervisor Bennett for bringing this forward to us.
Well, thank you, and I'll leave you with the last slide. We need more volunteers, we need more fundraising, we need more ombudsman. There's a reason why Leo Malter has six facilities, and it's because they've got to cover all the facilities. If you've got 45 volunteers and 178 facilities, you just have to do the math. And if we have more ombudsmen, we're more likely to keep our current ombudsman, because they won't be overwhelmed with too many facilities. And so, another great advantage to do that. And I hope we can report back in a year or two with a dramatic change in the number of volunteers. Thank you very much.
If you have as much success with this as you had with foster care and with all of our help, I'm sure you can, we can all bask in success.
Supervisor Park.
I also just want to thank you for bringing this to the attention of the people of Ventura County, and you do need to get to the East County. And I know Thousand Oaks isn't very aware of what you do, and it is unfortunately such a needed service. You know, we're seeing a lot of people that aren't getting full attention in some of these convalescent hospitals and other places, unfortunately. Your services are greatly needed, and they will grow, and I'll do what I can too in my district to see that we can get some more volunteers, because it is so needed. Thank you for what you do.
That it? Okay. We thank you. We look forward to working with you, and thank you so much. Appreciate all the good work. All right, and thank you Supervisor Bennett. Next up, we'll go back to our regular agenda, and I'd like to, if we could, now move to item 26, the Authorization to Implement a Local Single Point of Entry Project, and invite, we have Paul Lorenz to staff, to present the item to us, and Curtis Updike. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Johnston, Paul Lorenz, Public Health Department. Also joining me is Curtis Updike from the Human Services Agency. Back in June of this year, your Board directed the Healthcare Agency and the Human Services Agency staff. To return to your Board was two recommendations addressing two issues, two challenges, one of which has to do with the enrollment and retention of individuals that qualify for Medi-Cal and Healthy Families. And as we well know, there are a large number of children in Ventura County that qualify that are not enrolled. And so, we will, Curtis will report in terms of where we are today with our recommendation. I will follow up with a recommendation to your Board with regards to a children's self-pay discount policy for the Healthcare Agency that will further provide access for children that are uninsured in Ventura County through the Healthcare Agency system. So, let me turn this over to Curtis at this time.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members, CEO Johnston. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning and carry on what seems to be a healthcare theme.
It is.
We've talked about the hospitals, we've talked about long-term care, and now, we're going to talk about a way that we believe we can bring more children who are uninsured into our healthcare system. The recommendation, the recommendation coming before your Board today is for a local single point of entry project that brings together Medi-Cal eligibility workers and certified public assisters from the Healthcare Agency to a single site to improve and streamline the application process into either Medi-Cal Healthy Families, the Kaiser Plan for children up to 300% of the federal poverty level, or the proposed HCA Cares for Kids Plans, Cares for Kids that Paul will talk about later. Over the last six months, Ventura County Healthcare Agency and the Human Services Agency staff, along with Paul and I, partnered to assess what steps could be immediately taken to increase outreach, enrollment, retention efforts within the available healthcare programs that already exist. Also included in the work group were representatives from Supervisor Bennett's office, the CEO's office, Santa Paula School District, the First Five Commission, and the CHDP program. As your Board is aware, statistics indicate that a majority of uninsured children in Ventura County would qualify for the federally and state-funded Medi-Cal and Healthy Families programs. Yet, the separateness of the two programs and the way applications are processed, with Medi-Cal being done on a local level and Healthy Families being done on a state level, creates confusion for clients, redundancies, and time lags in processing that often results in clients not following through with the process. In addition, as the family circumstances change, they may lose eligibility from one program, however, still may be eligible for another. But this results in a new dilemma of trying to hand these cases back and forth, applications going to different places. It just creates more barriers for clients to get into. The work group decided the most effective and efficient way to use resources and to help children get into and keep them into the system, or into some type of healthcare coverage, would be to, would be to provide a regionally-based, four-regionally-based sites where anyone in the community who has contact with uninsured children could refer them for service. Each of these sites would be staffed by Medi-Cal eligibility workers and Healthcare Agency's certified application assisters, who could do an initial triage to determine the appropriate program for the potential client, which ones they might be eligible for, and then establish and maintain contact with the client through the process. In addition, staff members of the local single point of entry would be responsible for conducting retention activities for non-Medi-Cal clients, which would then, which would include follow-up with clients at points of renewal, working with individuals that failed to complete the application process, while regular Medi-Cal workers through their normal caseworking processes would increase their own retention activities to keep people in. And the importance of this, keeping people into the system on a number of levels, one is to make sure they maintain their doctor and maintain their coverage, and go for the preventive care, in the primary care that they need. In addition, there is a cost attached to that, and a study, what they call Medi-Cal churning, was done that estimates that about, costs $180 every time you enroll a client into the Medi-Cal program. 60% of the people that drop out of the program actually come back in, and we discontinue about 2,500 people a month out of our Medi-Cal program. If 60% of their coming back in, costing us $180 a person, you extrapolate that out throughout the state, and it's a very large cost. And so, by keeping the people into the system, we will reduce costs. Currently, or, let me go back. With an emphasis on using existing locations and resources, the proposed locations for the four local single point of entries would be the East County Intake and Eligibility Center in Simi Valley on Royal Avenue, the Santa Clara Valley Job and Career Center, Intake and Eligibility Center on Main Street in Santa Paula, the Center Point Mall in South Oxnard, which is in proximity to the Los Eastless Medical Clinic, and the Ventura County Campus in Ventura, where we currently have outstation staff currently residing in the Public Health Building. Current HSA outstation eligibility staff will continue to link and provide onsite application assistance at the high-volume, or high-volume health facilities and other key outreach locations and events, so that that will not change, even with this process, we'll still be going out to the clinics. Local single point of entry staffing will utilize newly designed, will utilize a newly designed referrals for services tool. The referral tool will allow providers that provide services, they will use the referral tool to go into the local single point of entry, and at that point, we will make direct contact with those clients. The local single point of entry will determine and triage what programs are eligible for, and it will either go to a CAA, a Certified Application Assister, or a Human Services Officer to determine the eligibility. Also, aside from the providers that are sending the referrals in, also, any community-based organization that has contact with the clients would be able to send in the referral form and get it started and helping that process started. It is estimated that county-wide, we should receive approximately 3,235 monthly referrals on an annual basis. The program itself, just so it would be rectly, or easily recognizable, we wanted to brand it or put a name to it, so we're calling it the Healthcare for Kids Ventura County Program. We've developed an easily recognized logo, collateral support materials that will go out to all of our providers throughout the community, and we'll be able to answer questions both of our referring partners, the clinics, the private providers, and the CBOs, and also our clients themselves. Each local single point of entry would consist of two to four human service officers and one certified application assister, depending on the number of applications to be processed. A portion of the current Medi-Cal outstation eligibility staff will be reassigned to the local single point of entry. At this time, based on the anticipated volume, additional HSO staffing is not needed. Public Health has a limited number of certified application assistors and will require up to four additional CAAs to fully staff the local single point of entries. These new public health positions would also include three community service worker, three allocations, and one HCA Training Assistant allocation, and those are included in your Board letter request. But we do expect that this fiscal year, there will be no additional funds needed to get the program started. Any additional costs, we don't expect to exceed $180,000 throughout subsequent years. In addition to gathering, or in addition to the other part of the program, we want to be able to measure our effectiveness and success. So, we've worked with Rick Young in the Information Services Department to develop a project-specific tracking and case management system. The system will allow us to track basic information of clients entering through the local single point of entry. It will also allow us to keep track of people who are already into the system, so we get, we know when they're getting close to their renewal time, so we can stay in contact with them and track them through the process, so we don't lose them through the cracks. We don't really have that kind of marketing, or that kind of case management system that exists with the, within our current systems to do it, especially with the CAAs and the Healthy Families process. In order to uniformly and effectively implement the local single point of entries, Project Countywide, we're recommending that the project be phased in with the initial local single point of entry being established later this month, probably within a week, at the, in Santa Clara Valley, at the Santa Clara Valley Intake and Eligibility Center. Santa Clara Valley was selected for a variety of reasons, including an identified need to increase enrollment into Medi-Cal and Healthy Families from this area, a manageable population from which to obtain data and evaluate performance outcomes, as well as establish linkages between community organizations that is very strong in the Santa Paula, in the Santa Clara River Valley as it exists. Some of the real benefits to the program, aside from just the fact that the clients that will be served, is it strengthens, it strengthens the ties between the Human Services Agency and the Healthcare Agency. It changes us from primarily a reaction agency, at least from the Human Services Agency part, we generally wait until clients came to us or came into the clinics. This allows us to do some more outreach to get out into the community. I tell my staff frequently, my goal is to someday have someone sitting with a laptop in the pyru on the corner, being able to take applications for Medi-Cal in our programs, and this helps to get us in that direction. It also helps us to work closer with the communities that already serve this population, to help them to make the referrals into our system. And the last thing, and I think for Paul and I, very gratifying, is that we worked very closely with staff to put this together, and staff is genuinely excited about getting started with this program. So, I think as soon as the Board, if the Board decides to go ahead and recommend this, that our staff would be willing and ready to go with this thing. Paul and I, from, at least from my standpoint, would like to thank everyone that participated in the work group. With special recognition to Hui Anoe and Salfa Saccido for their significant role that they played in bringing the programs together. So, I'll let Paul make his presentation unless you have any questions.
Questions this time?
I have some questions, but one I would like.
Okay. Paul? Okay.
Okay, thank you Board.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Healthcare Agency, as you well know, and your prior comments on other Board items kind of lend itself to this, is always looking for an opportunity to improve access to vulnerable populations and individuals in our community that are uninsured or underserved. You know, through our efforts, and we hear a lot about Children's Health Initiative in terms of increasing access to healthcare, you know, the Healthcare Agency has been looking at opportunities to do that for some time, not just to children, but older adults and so forth. We have an opportunity today to ask your Board to approve a self-pay discount policy specifically for children to further maximize the availability of our system to this population. The system, as you well know, is geographically set up, financially sound, to better manage the accessibility issues of these uninsured children. And we want to offer that as an opportunity to, one, remove this issue of a financial barrier for those children that obviously are not accessing healthcare on a regular and ongoing basis, on a preventive basis, if you will. Because what we all know is that early and ongoing access to healthcare can save the system in terms of healthcare costs much more in the future as they grow older. And so, it is preventive focus, it is a financially sound and sustainable system in terms of what we're offering, in terms of the self-pay, flat-fee discount. And it also establishes that one key component we always talk about, which is the medical home, which is the conduit to which you, as an individual, as a child, if you have one in your, in your family, to ensure that they have access to specialty care, to urgent care services, to hospitalization, and so forth. So, we believe as a Healthcare Agency, this furthers our mission and goal to provide access to those that are uninsured and underserved.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions now? Supervisor Michaels.
And I'm not too sure who, or maybe both of you have answers to these questions. Will you be able to track individual usage? And where I'm going with this question is if a family signs up and then they're not bringing the child in for especially preventative, for immunizations, et cetera, can you track that? Is there a way to notify families that they are coming up, not for their renewal or eligibility, but coming up for needed basic appointments for the children, to make sure that, that once, it's not just an exercise in signing up children, it's an exercise in getting preventative care to the children. And my, and my third question, and then you can just kind of answer them all at once, is the community outreach piece to the, not only to the families who would potentially be eligible, well, they'll all be eligible somehow, but also to the providers and the CBOs? As to the referral service, how, why, when, getting them on board to be active partners in referring patients and children that are seen at their facilities? Thank you.
Very good questions. One of the focuses of this entire effort of enrollment and eligibility and retention really has to do with utilization as well. In fact, there's ongoing discussions with the CHI work group about how we can, as a community, address this issue of utilization. To say that a person has healthcare coverage doesn't necessarily mean that they're actually utilizing it correctly and appropriately. And our goal here is to ensure they get into access to care, receive the services to prevent costs down the road. So, that issue in terms of utilization is extremely important. What we are looking at as part of the system's management is to make contact with the individual on a regular basis. So, once they're enrolled, our intention is to contact the family on a periodic basis to educate them and to find out whether or not they're actually utilizing the coverage that they have been enrolled in. Our view is that if, in fact, they're using the insurance product, the coverage, and accessing healthcare on an ongoing basis, then, in fact, they're more than, more interested in actually renewing. What happens now today is that they roll in Medi-Cal for that episodic visit, whether it's in the hospital or the clinic, and they don't choose to go back to the doctor, you know, until they're actually absolutely in need of it. And what happens there is that they let it lapse. They say, "Well, I don't need it. I don't need to bother going to the office, getting re-enrolled. I don't want to pay the monthly premiums for the Healthy Families product of $15 a month, because it doesn't seem as though I need it." And so, one of the most important things we can do is educate at the time of enrollment and re-educate through the entire process. The other thing that you bring up is in terms of relationship with the CBOs. Our effort as a county, both HSA as well as the Healthcare Agency, has focused really on system changes. And these system changes that we are proposing today will lend itself to better relationships with the CBOs, so that community organizations will know where to refer, who to contact, and how the systems work, whether it's Medi-Cal or Healthy Families. Right now, some organizations have a relationship with HSA, but they don't have a relationship for the Healthy Families component. Now, they get both, and they get anything related to health insurance coverage for children when they contact the county. So, that's...
Just briefly back to my question of kind of tracking and advising, notifying. I mean, you know, typically, I guess that would be in the office file of the physician. You know, it's time for your tetanus or your, you know, whooping cough shot or immunization or whatever. or whatever, flu, dah dah dah. But is there a way, if the children are enrolled in this program, that there's a secondary way to follow the needs of the child, or at least a blanket, if your child is aged five and about to start school, this is what you need and this is where you can go to get it?
With regards to the healthcare agency cares for kids program that we're proposing, those children that will be offered that, that discount program, we will, as an agency, be able to monitor the utilization. So yes, with regards to those children that are uninsured, that are not enrolled in a Medi-Cal Healthy Families program, but rather this discount program, we'll be able to watch the utilization and so forth. As well as within the healthcare agency, in terms of Medi-Cal across the board and all the, the groups, if you will, the healthcare agency serves, we will also be able to monitor and see how the utilization is going with, in those programs. It'd be much more difficult, other than outside the healthcare agency system, if you will, to monitor utilization. But the key opportunity we have is to educate and re-contact them with regards to enrollment and make sure that they understand the benefits of the program.
Other questions? Supervisor Bennett?
I'm gonna try to do these four fairly quickly, so I just want to clarify, make sure that I have this straight in my head. The outreach is going to begin as soon as the board approves this, correct? The cares for kids part of it's going to take longer? My understanding is sometime around January, by the time you put, put the self-discount program?
There are two triggers for the healthcare agency's cares for kids program. One is that we do not expect to start earlier than December of this year, first of this year. And then the other trigger is the availability of other low-cost health insurance products out there. Currently Kaiser has a product, which is 300% and below for documented as well as undocumented for children of Ventura County, and we will continue to encourage families to enroll in that program. Now, at some point in time, it's expected that Kaiser may not be available. And if that's the case, then we will, as a healthcare agency, offer these families this opportunity in terms of these discounts.
So this is a, that was going to be my next, this is a backup, only if, for some reason, Kaiser is, doesn't, doesn't, doesn't work or is capped or whatever in terms of...
Yes.
So we won't see people immediately moving into this, this cares for kids program because we still have Kaiser as the...
As the need arises, this program will be...
Will be available. So we're just getting it set up so that it will be ready to move, right? The next thing is not, not a question that I expect an answer to, except it seems that we have to keep paying attention to incentives for parents to follow through on their responsibility to take reasonable steps to keep their children enrolled. And so, I mean, if we, you know, if we got a good program, and it's just, it's a question of the parents, and so I just, as we're rolling these things out, I assume we're going to be paying attention to trying to create more and more incentives for parents to follow through on their, their part of the bargain to try to make this happen. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Great. And my final question, as you said, prevention is going to be cheaper. I just want to be clear, if, no matter who the person is, any uninsured child presents themselves to an emergency room with a severe problem that got there because of an, you know, untreated chronic problem that then became an emergency, we foot the bill and have to take care of them, correct?
Yes.
So it, so that when we say it's cheaper, it's cheaper because if we catch these people early in a clinic, we save the money that we would be spending in the emergency room on those, those children.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have one speaker card, but less finished questions? Supervisor Flynn?
I'll play.
Okay. Any other questions at this point? Okay, if you'd like to have a seat there, sir, we'll invite David Smith up, submitted a card to comment on this item. Good morning, Mr. Smith.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Dave Smith, CEO of United Way of Ventura County. Having a little problem here. I've been having problems today. No, not really. I'm here representing both United Way and as the Chair of the Steering Committee of the Children's Health Initiative in Ventura County. Couple of comments regarding the single point of entry program. We support the program as a starting point, a positive starting point for moving the entire, the overall Children's Health Initiative process forward. Over the last few weeks, actually the last few months, there's been a lot of discussion about the need for collaboration, working together if we are truly going to establish a comprehensive healthcare coverage program for youngsters in Ventura County. The Children's Health Initiative involvement with the county at this time has been in the spirit of collaboration, understanding that we can complement each other. The community-based organizations, the faith-based organizations that have been focused on Children's Health Initiative are very interested in working closely with the county to ensure that, in the end, we have a comprehensive program that serves more better than how they're served today. Our hope would be that this is a positive, and our belief would be that this is a positive step in that direction, and I would encourage the, the board's support of, of this program at this time. So thank you for the opportunity to share those thoughts with you.
And thank you for speaking to it. Okay, back to the board. Questions? Supervisor Flynn?
I don't have a question, I just think that this is a continuation of preventive medicine that was established in 1986, right? With the 10 clinics, and now outreach. But you know, when you go to talk with parents, regardless of the economic level of those parents, what is their, the very first thing they think of when they establish priorities for their families? That is healthcare. If you ask them, "What's the most important thing for your family?", healthcare. So this is a way of reaching out to those who are not on it, who do not have healthcare. There's some plants, factories, like the mushroom factory, where they had, the company had some sort of healthcare plan, but it was very expensive, and the adults had a hard time being covered because of the expense, but Healthy Families stepped in, right? And covered those, the children of those parents. So I, I think the strategy here is super. What it is, is a strategy, and that is to catch the people who we're not, who we're not serving now with healthcare. It's an extension, again, of preventive medicine, in addition to the 10 clinics.
From reading the, the reports, it seems like there should be no reason not to have children insured. There are programs out there, there are funding for those programs out there, and to increase our outreach, I think, is excellent, so that we can assure the health of the children in the county. And I appreciate the healthcare agency and the Human Services Agency partnering up on this together, because that's how we're going to get the best outreach, and I applaud this approach. The single point is an excellent approach to making sure that we can get as many who are already somewhat in the system into assuring them that they can have insurance for their children for healthcare, so I appreciate it.
Supervisor Bennett?
Appreciate your answer to the questions and your, your presentations. I would just offer these, these points, I think, they, we've mentioned some of these before, and they will bear mentioning sort of every time we deal with this issue. Healthcare is broken in this country. It, the solution is, the real solution's going to come at the national level, and perhaps national and state level. It is very tough for us to solve a broken problem here at the local level, but we have to do the best we can. And we just have to recognize, we can't solve the whole problem here at the local level when we're the weakest form of government financially. That should be, I believe, addressed at, at the national level. This program makes significant improvements, and I don't expect to stop with these two programs, but this program is, is a start and makes significant improvements. The things that it improves are, it improves outreach, and that really, if you had to, if you had said the greatest good for the greatest number of kids, if we have, if the number really is 32,000, 85% of the children are children that are already qualified, they're just not enrolled. If you want to do the greatest good for the most kids, we've got to reach those children, and then we have to, as, as was so able to point it out, we have to keep them in the program. It's the retention. We've got to stop the revolving door. Not going to be easy to convince people to pay premiums when they can say, "Well, when the next episode shows up, you'll just get me enrolled again," and that's why we have to pay a lot of attention to that. But two important aspects of this program is it addresses the issue of outreach, and it addresses the issue of retention. And the third thing is that the, the cares for kids part of it increases the amount of preventative medicine that children will receive, and therefore is better for children, but also better for our system, because it keeps them out of our emergency room. It's better for us financially, it's better for us overall to have these children have a medical home established where we have a better understanding of what's going on and all of that. So I, I really applaud HCA and HSA for putting their two departments together, not easy to do, and coming up with some real proactive and creative things that take advantage of what might be the best public hospital clinic program in the state of California. We're taking advantage of that with this, and I commend you for that, so I'm very much supportive of this. Thank you.
Supervisor Michael?
Yeah, pardon me, I'm very supportive, and I think Steve at the end pointed out one of the things that's important to me, and that is taking advantage of an existing system and ju, and fine-tuning it. You know, those programs are out there, they're being funded, and they're not being used to the maximum. They're in place, we don't have to duplicate anything. It's already there and in place. To me, the most difficult issue right now is educating parents on the importance, no matter how painful it might be on a weekly or a monthly basis, to make an outlay that they don't think they need, how important it is for the health and well-being and future of their children to stay enrolled and to use the facilities on a regular basis to make sure they have healthy children, and they get that education on health for life. And so I'm very much supportive of this, where Supervisor Bennett and I may disagree that we need a national healthcare system and that it is broken in this country, I do agree that we can always do better, and particularly for the population of our children in this county. And so kudos for the hard work, once again, of collaboration between departments and intelligent use of available resources that will benefit the children of this county, and I am very supportive.
Okay.
Move approval.
Okay, there's a motion, and a second.
For discussion.
No, hearing any objection? I don't hear any objection. I certainly add to, to the support on this, it's been outstanding work. It is a key piece of, of doing better what we are already doing, enhancing programs, removing barriers. We should be a barrier-free government, that way we can get things done, and we do that by collaboration. And the Children's Health Initiative is a significant inspiration for us to look at how we do our services and see how we can do them better, so we have access, we have cost efficiencies, and we have utilization, and that is the key. An article that I pulled down from a Washington columnist, "Healthcare Crisis Goes Untreated, But the Cancer Is Spreading." Just one quick statistic, the share of Americans receiving health insurance at work has fallen in, at each of the last four years, from 63.6% in 2000 to 59.8% in 2004. And when that happens, when, when folks aren't insured, when folks, and this is across all, all spectrums, they come to the public healthcare system. And the job that we do best in providing access and utilization will serve all of us in the cost savings and in a healthier community. So I certainly support the item. And hearing no further comments on that, that passes unanimously. We have, thank you for your great work, go out and do some more. Thank you. All right, I'm, I'm going to, we, we have an 11 o'clock time certain, and I'd like to ask the board if we could do that, but then I know that we have an Assessor item and two Sheriff items, and, and I see you sitting there, and, and I really, unfortunately, the agenda got away from us, and, but I will, I would like to call you up then, immediately following the United Way item, if I might, so that we can get those complete, and you can go on about, and then the board will finish the rest of its agenda. Does that sound good? Sounds, sounds works? Okay, good. So let's do, because the United Way folks have to go out into the plaza and set up and be ready to, to kick this thing off, so I would like to call up, first, let me find it, item 24. We will move to that, which is the kickoff campaign for the County of Ventura Employees' United Way Campaign Kickoff, it is that annual time. And we have the Buena High Jazz Band canceled at the last minute. Oh, I shouldn't have read, shouldn't have read that note, sorry. Family did not realize it was Rosh Hashanah. Never mind. Okay, but we have lots of other things out there in the plaza waiting to be celebrated, and it is a pleasure to have our, our coordinators this year, our co-chairs, Michael Planet from our Executive Officer of the Superior Court, Ted Myers, Human Services Agency. The theme for this year's campaign is "For Your Community, Your Family, and Yourself." Take it on there, guys.
Good morning, Ms. Long, members of the board, Ms. Johnson. Pleased to be here, Ted and I. The Ted and Mike Show continues today. Our premiere is today at 11:30. As you know, today's our kickoff celebration, and, and you've heard our theme. You know, as we started planning this earlier in the year, we kind of thought we had some clear skies ahead of us and some smooth sailing, but since then, there've been a number of disasters around the world, and even in the United States, that have brought out really the best in all of us. The tsunamis that destroyed parts of Asia, and Hurricanes Katrina and Rita that have devastated the southern coastal states have resulted in some unprecedented charity, record contributions of clothing, funds, food, and more. However, in our own community, Ventura County, many of our community-based services rely on funding provided by the United Way for their continued operations. The programs they provide to the neediest of our neighbors and friends are so essential, and this is why this year's campaign is so important. We're asking everyone to consider making a simple donation of $2 each paycheck to help make a huge difference in the life and strengthening our community. So that's our goal this year. You know, our campaign committee this year worked hard. More than 32 individuals from the county and Superior Court have been meeting since February or so to plan this year's campaign. Some of them are here today, and I'd like to ask them to stand and be recognized. And those two here in the back? Thank you all for your...
We thank you.
For your work.
Yes.
I think they're waiting, they rush out to load up water balloons. Oh, and here's Eve. We also received fantastic support from the United Way of Ventura County. Our appreciation and thanks are extended to David Smith and especially to Eve Liebman. Eve is, who just, right now, this is Eve.
Hello, Eve.
She shows up and says she's going to be there and does show up. She's been terrific, working, provide us support, information, and training, and we thank her. Thank you, Eve. You know, one of the new innovations that was launched with this year's campaign was a page on the Ventura County website, the county's Intranet site. It's accessible to all county court employees directly off the Intranet homepage, and on it you'll find information about our United Way campaign, a calendar of events, the winner of the poster contest, the department coordinators, and links to United Way membership agencies. If you haven't already, I encourage you to pull it up and spend a few minutes taking a look at it. Last time we checked, there was over in excess of 1,000 hits to it, and I know 100 of them were mine. But it's really a terrific site, and we're really taking advantage of the, of the Intranet and the web to help publicize. You know, it's a different age, sending stuffers with, with paychecks, and, and those things are, you know, kind of approaches of the past, and we thought we'd reach out to the Internet, and our folks at the, with information services have been terrific in helping design what is really, really nice-looking and informative website. Please let me also announce the winner of this year's poster contest winner. We had 11 entries, and they're set up, displayed out in the lobby, all the, all the submissions, including the winners. The winner, we had some great artwork, and our committee selected the poster designed by Mickey Bouchard from GSA. We have a framed poster for Mickey and a $100 gift certificate.
Yay!
And we have a $100 gift certificate.
Hey!
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You see the poster? We, we also would like to present... We also would like to present to each of you a framed copy of this year's poster, and one for each of the supervisors, for Mr. Johnson, why don't you hang it proudly in public, and we'll, if you can't grab one on the way out, we'll have them dropped off at your offices, wear with pride. Our celebration starts shortly outside in the courtyard, it's a beautiful day for our celebration. We'll have a number of United Way member agencies, and nine county and court departments have adopted agencies to raise funds on-site today. We've got magicians, Karnak is making another appearance, there's karaoke contests, and all kinds of exciting ways to raise some money. We have a number of businesses to thank, including BJ's Pizza, The Water Company, McDonald's, and the more than 30 local businesses who've provided raffle prizes to help us raise funds for the United Way. Their support is greatly, greatly appreciated. Again, thank you, the board, so much for your support this year. I also want to thank Mr. Johnson for setting time aside on his agenda of his executive committee meetings every month for Ted and I to make a pitch, and as your reward, we'll be having a water balloon toss contest outside as one of the first events, and so we hope you all can come see us. So, "For Your Community, Your Family, and Yourself," the theme for our campaign this year. Thank you so much, and we look forward to a very successful campaign. Thank you.
And we thank you. And we'll get out there as soon as we can. Any further comments? Mr. Smith, again, we thank you for being here. Eve, thank you for all your work with the teams and county employees. We thank you for what I know will be a giving and a gift and a celebration of the United Way and the work that's to be done. And I look forward to, I want the poster, Joyce, it's got the red frame around it. Yeah, that one's mine. And we'll be out there as soon as we can get through this agenda, and we thank you again. Thank you, Michael, thank you, Ted, for all your work. Whatever, it works for me here. Yeah? Okay, great. All right. Okay, board members, if we can, what, anything? Okay. Well, the assessor is technically, all right. We'd like to move ahead, if we might, and we'll be right back to you, to item 32 and 33. The sheriff's request is before us, and it is, let me find my page here. Way back here. Who's introducing this? Yeah, Sheriff Brooks. I don't know if you were doing it or not. Okay, item 32 is approval of the Sheriff Department's Public Safety Recruitment Plan. Good morning, Sheriff.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Johnson. I apologize for not being here at the beginning of the presentation on the disaster response. I've got a couple of brief comments and observations to make about that that lead into this presentation. One thing that we learned and had basically a reminder to us, because we already knew that it did work, is the systems in California that we use in Ventura County really do work. The State Emergency Management System, the Incident Command System, the law enforcement mutual aid system that only one other state in the nation has, and the Unified Command System that works so well when we had 100 jurisdictions working together in one event work. They've been tested, they've been proven, we've worked the bugs out on those systems over time, and we're very fortunate to have the benefit of those and to train in them. Secondarily, the best system in the world doesn't work if you don't have good relationships. And because we have interacted not only in training but on disaster responses in the past, all of the participants know each other, they trust each other, they work together. The level of cooperation was extraordinary. One of the things that's helped us on a county level is that we've had county managers outside of the public safety arena, members of the CEO staff and other county managers participating in our emergency operating center, learning their roles, giving us a broader and deeper bench to go to when we needed expertise. That also helps facilitate response from public works and public health and fire and all the other participants. And the final thing is the response of the public in Ventura County. It was extraordinary. I think they all watched TV and saw the fate of people that didn't evacuate in Louisiana, but we have never had that level of cooperation before. We didn't have complaints, we didn't have people standing in the way or blocking the path of fire engines, and it worked flawlessly from that perspective. One of the things that we were faced with, you know, the primary mission in a disaster is saving lives, and the law enforcement role is evacuation. We normally respond to any kind of a mutual aid call-out or local disaster with three squads of 25 deputies apiece, 75 officers in total, and then we enhance that over time. The best we could marshal was 30 in this incident. Fortunately, the fire didn't last any longer. Fortunately, the perimeter of the fire wasn't any greater than it was. We were able to supplement with mutual aid and supplement with 100 trained volunteers from search teams and dart teams, search and rescue teams, to get the job done, but that leads into the need for the presentation that I'm making to you. As you know, we're experiencing a staffing crisis, and we need your assistance. We're currently experiencing 81 vacancies at the deputy sheriff level. That's a vacancy factor for us of 11%. If you add to that the fact that we have 105 fewer deputy positions than we had three years ago, it's almost a 25% reduction in force over time, and we still have the same obligations in terms of mandates and emergency responses, and we get to the end of our resources far more quickly than we used to in the past. Deputies are routinely ordered to work 18-hour shifts, to work their days off. We lock down jail housing units because we don't have enough security staff. Burnout's a serious concern, and service level reductions, further service level reductions may have to occur in the future. So we're doing everything we can. The CEO has worked with us to allow us to hire provisional deputies, basically before some agency, other agency gets them, while they're waiting for an academy. We can now hire them, give them a certain level of training, put them to work in our jails, which provides relief for our existing staff. That's been very helpful. Another prong in our strategy is the proposal that we'll be banking to you today. During the past few months, our attrition rate has actually increased to 50% above the historic average, so instead of getting better, it's actually been getting worse. We intended to open the East County booking facility some time ago, and we're still, now we've pushed the opening date up to the end of October. It'll all be on overtime because of the attrition that we've had, we just don't have the staff to, even though we have the funding for it, we don't have the staff. To give you an example of the difficulties that we face, when we held a recruitment, we would normally get 500 to 700 applicants. So we recently held one, we had 110 people apply, only 50 showed up for the test. Out of the 50, only 20 passed the written and the physical agility, and then we have to start looking at the background and the polygraph examinations and drug testing and all the things that we put people through, psychological exams. Then we have a 30% washout rate in the academy, so out of that 110 people that applied, we're lucky to get two or three through the academy. At that rate, we need to have about 3,200 applicants to meet our goal of filling those 81 vacant positions. It's an enormous amount. One of the, you know, we're experiencing the era where we used to hold applications and testing processes in gymnasiums and auditoriums, now we do it in small conference rooms because the numbers are down. Part of it is the competition. LASO, LAPD are hiring thousands of new officers and deputy sheriffs. They have professional full-time recruiting teams, they advertise on television, and, you know, have budgets that just pale our ability in comparison. So volume is a problem. The economy and the low unemployment rate is also a problem for us. Local agencies that have better salary and benefit packages tend to wait until we train people and then come and recruit them away from us after we've paid to put them through the academy, which is a double blow to us because we're out the cost of training, which is about $85,000, and then we have to start that process all over again. So we're looking now at reaching out for help the best way that we can. So the second prong in our strategy is to go to county employees with an incentive program to elicit their cooperation in helping us attract the best and the brightest to be deputy sheriffs and sheriff's dispatchers, which is also a very hard-to-recruit category. The monetary incentive would be $1,000 gross added to them for an applicant that makes it all the way through the process and graduates from the academy and is still with the sheriff's department. So there's, the emphasis is on quality referrals, and there's no reward for a candidate that's not successful in the program. We know that local referrals are generally people that live here, generally people that have ties to the community who want to stay in Ventura County. Those are very hard people for us to reach, and it's far more expensive for us to marshal the efforts to reach them in any other way than word of mouth, because word of mouth, historically, has always been the most successful for us. Ventura County is a great place to live and work and play and raise a family, as you all know. The Ventura County Sheriff's Department has a breadth of opportunities in terms of promotional opportunities and transfers and a wide variety of assignments. Those are our recruiting advantages. What we need help in is getting the word out to as many people as we can, and as we look historically, the best applicants that we've gotten over the years has been word of mouth from county employees or sheriff's employees, and so we're looking to that again, and we're looking to create an added incentive for them to be able to do that. I'd like to thank the CEO for working with us again on this project, the auditor's office, county council, human resources, all of them have had to work through the mechanics of what was doing a fairly difficult proposal, and I think we came up with something that will work in the short term and hopefully give us some assistance in bridging that gap of vacancies and getting back to full staffing or close. Thank you.
Questions? Supervisor Michael?
In reading the wording here in the attachment, would it, I think it would be smart to put a one-time gross payment of $1,000 will be paid through payroll, so that there's no unusual expectations from people who may not understand the system? I'm supportive, I know the issues. As a matter of fact, I talked to a couple of CMEPD during the incident who were trying to recruit away some of your people as we speak, so I'm very well aware of the problems that you face. My other question would be, did you weigh the cost of a recruiting, professional recruiting program or advertising campaign against this referral system?
Well, we're actually doing both.
Okay, okay.
We're looking at hiring somebody, maybe a retired employee, maybe just a professional in the field to come back to help facilitate, because we do not have a recruiting team or the people that we can move into one. So they can do some of the coordination, and then we can use managers or others that are available to go into job fairs and other venues. So we're doing both, we're looking at the production of materials and videos and all things that are fairly dated at this point, in addition to this program.
Okay, great. That's, my only real question was the, you know, whether or not there ought to be verbiage in there that is very clear, a one-time referral fee will be paid. And I hope that you do, and however we can help, within reason to beef up the recruiting program, because I think it's critical, and I know I see, every time I'm on the other side of the line, I see posters along the freeway, and I hear radio ads, and I see them in magazines, you know, talking about either LASO or LAPD, and how do you compete with the giant? And I wish it were possible to let them pay for training all of these people, and then we run across and pluck them this way. But we have a little bit of an issue with housing on this side of the border, and so whatever we can do, and whatever I think any of our offices can do, I'm sure we're all willing to help somehow.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
I applaud this effort. We've got a problem, and there are going to need to be multiple solutions to the problem. This is just one of them. So happy to support this. I particularly appreciate the fact that you excluded human resources personnel in both the sheriff's and the county's office to avoid the conflict of interest. I just have one question for you. It seems to me that since the payment doesn't come until somebody goes all the way through the training program, and I don't know what level to do this at, I'd like to get your advice, that the trainers probably would have, could be perceived as having a conflict of interest also. In other words, if my $1,000 is going to come if I can get you through the program, so shouldn't we also exclude the trainers, or at least the people in charge of the training program? That's my question, and if you're comfortable with that, I'd like to just ask, see if the board is willing to do that. Do you have any problem with that?
No, I don't have a problem.
I could just see, you know, if somebody wanted to make hay out of this thing, I could just see somebody. And the fact that so many people, you know, we do have people wash out during a training and say, well, he washed me out, but he took care of this person, it doesn't seem to me that it's that likely that we'll have trainers making recommendations that it would be worth the risk of the public relations problem.
That's a good point.
Okay, great, thanks.
Madam Chair, it seems to me there must be a multitude of reasons for the lack of recruitment's recruiting ability in this county, and probably one of, major one is the expense of living here. I think it must have an impact.
Yes.
But also, I think that your concern, at least the way I hear it, with 85 positions, right, are paid for, but we're not able to fill them. After a while, we began to see law enforcement hurt in Ventura County. It may be up here at 10, it's going to go down to 8 unless we find some kind of a way to recruit people. But housing has to be a major issue.
It is.
And actually, you're kind of the first one to come forward, as I hear you, and identifying, at least I'm identifying, the impact of living here, high cost of living here.
It's a good point, and that's one of the reasons that we chose this as a strategy, because referral of current employees are probably going to be other current residents. And if they're already living here, we have a better chance of recruiting and keeping them. Many of our people that are training are not only going to Los Angeles or other local agencies for higher pay, benefits, whatever it happens to be, but they're leaving the state for better housing. So we have that additional drain, which historically has never been a problem, but now it's a significant part of our attrition rate.
I'm glad to be able to assist. I know Supervisor Bennett, was it last meeting, was looking at how we can, throughout the entire county, try to help in recruitment, because we're having a lot of our folks leaving also. I'm glad to be able to help, maybe we can pluck from some more expensive counties like Santa Barbara and such, you know, but it's true, people that already live in this county are really good candidates, and I'm sorry that we're not qualified for the $1,000 since we're elected officials, but maybe we can get like a ride-along or something if we can get some.
I'm disqualified as well.
Just a question, if Supervisor Michael's request for the added language is added, you would have a conflict with Section 4E?
If the auditor's talking about the provision where you can qualify up to five times, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
That was the intent, that someone could nominate up to five people within a one-year period of time and receive a reward for each one of those. We didn't want anybody getting 25 or 30, but we thought if somebody's interested enough and involved enough that they give us five qualified applicants, we'd be happy to reward them for that.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, and yes, the language would then be conflicting, but just so that somewhere it says $1,000 for each, up to five, or something that says it's a one-time payment period into discussion, so that somebody doesn't make the assumption that this is then going to roll into their salary
Right.
...because it's coming through payroll, that's the only place I'm discomforted.
That's what I understood you need to.
Otherwise, I'm very supported. Yeah, so y'all can work on the words and make it legal.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I would suggest just inserting the word "single" in front of "gross payment" in item number three to satisfy Supervisor Michael's concern.
And then it would not be a problem for the five, up to five? Yeah, that works.
Does that work? Other comments?
Yeah, our auditor and our county council are earning their pay here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Five oh, you've got the support.
Thank you.
We thank you for the work.
Thanks very much.
And the tough challenges ahead. Thank you. The next thing under the sheriff's
I'd like to move the recommended action with the one modification that the sheriff agrees to, and that is whatever is the appropriate language to deal with the issue of potential conflicts of interest with the trained personnel.
Great. Second.
Motion second. Any objection to the motion?
I don't hear objection. I don't have objection either. I think we have to be creative and move ahead on this. I would like to, I would like to just ask our CEO to take a look at whether this is also a program, as it says here, for county employees, that's all county employees, to help with this referral program and be rewarded appropriately, that we might take a look at whether we need to do something along this line also for our probation officers and possibly even for our nurses. We are looking at hard-to-recruit areas in this county for these other public service areas. And take a look to see if something that this would be applicable and give us a report back. I'd like that also. Five-oh, you've got the support.
Thank you.
We thank you for the work.
Thanks very much.
And the tough challenges ahead. Thank you. The next thing under the sheriff's agenda item is item 33. We'll act on that, and then go to the assessor.
Good morning again, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Mr. CEO and staff, Laura Hernandez, Assistant Director, Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services. I am here again requesting the board's approval to accept a fiscal year 2005 Homeland Security Grant. We are recommending that your board authorize the sheriff's department to accept this grant on behalf of the Fire Protection District, the County Public Health EMS Agency, the sheriff's department, and the 10 cities who are participating in the receipt of this grant. Grant monies in the amount of $2,43,523 will go to support approximately 11 different domestic preparedness programs, including the Citizen Core Program, which supports our CERT and DART programs throughout the county, our EOC. We are doing some upgrades to our Emergency Operations Center, and we're also helping the cities do the same with their centers. And so, money will be allocated to assist countywide upgrades for all our Emergency Operations Center. There will also be some monies devoted towards staffing for emergency management training. All our EOC teams are going to go through a training this year. We're inviting county departments to participate in that, as well as the cities. First responder training, first responder equipment for police and fire, homeland security planning, public notification system, physical security enhancements for our law enforcement agencies, and a public health data collection system, including a WMD exercise that we've got planned for this year. And we also, I should mention, have some money left over from previous years that was to go toward a continuity of government exercise for your board, and we're hoping to proceed with that as well this year. This grant represents the seventh year that we've participated in a grant-supported domestic preparedness program. As you know, it doesn't support all our costs in planning for a terrorist attack, but it has helped us greatly increase our capabilities, and these funds do go toward helping us prepare for all emergencies, not just terrorism. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions and ask for your approval.
Other questions?
No, I would move approval, and if you can get all of that out of that amount of grant, you're a miracle worker. But I would move approval and say that it's the right thing to do.
There's a motion of second. Supervisor Parks have a question.
Yes, it does have some wonderful things that we will be able to take advantage of with these grants. Regarding the training for CERT, I know that we have some opportunity to get our CERT teams registered with the state as being certified emergency workers, and they have to go through a background check, which is expensive. Maybe some of these funds would be able to help go through those background checks so they can get that certification, get the identification. And we just saw in these last emergencies, it'd be great if they had an identification badge with them when they go and knock on your door at 2:00 in the morning. So, I would think that would be an opportunity. I'd love to see that happen.
That's something we certainly can look into.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion of second and objection. Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. Good work. Now, we'll move to item 28, our assessor. Again, sorry, the agenda got a little drawn out there, and we'll move ahead with the item to, for consideration of approval of five fixed-term position allocations in the assessor's office. And good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, honorable members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Ms. Cohen, and Mr. Kleibum. My name is Wheeling Tenoy, Deputy Assessor for the assessor's office. I'm here to seek your approval for five fixed-term position allocations for the assessor's office. Since July 2004, the assessor's office has initiated numerous initiatives to adjust for the loss of 15 positions. These include reorganizing and consolidating like functions, adding a new supervisory class, developing two new application systems for appeals and exemption management, installing an automated phone tree, purchasing an appraisal management system, and using extra help and overtime hours extensively to a level that's equivalent to six full-time equivalent staff. Despite these efforts, our backlogs as of roll closed on June 30, 2005, reached a very disturbing level of 11,000 incomplete work items. Majority of this carryover work items requires assessment role correction, which creates more work for the assessor's office as well as for the auditor, controller, and tax collector offices. More importantly, it hurts our taxpayers. Our inability to timely process ownership transfers, new constructions, new subdivisions, prop aids, exclusion claims, exemptions, and appeal cases interferes directly with our taxpayers' ability to secure credit, refinance, properly close escrow, settle estate issues, lower their tax liability, or just simply timely pay their taxes. Given the extensive training and also state certification required for our appraisers, we recognize that an eight-month fixed-term appointment may not yield the best return on county's training investment, nor will it attract the best and brightest candidates for the county. However, the five proposed fixed-term positions will provide much-needed temporary leave for the growing backlogs in the assessor's office, and it's a step in the right direction. We ask that you approve the proposed recommendations, and if possible, consider during the next budget process, a more permanent solution towards securing more timely assessments for our property owners, and also a stronger property tax base for Ventura County. In closing, I would like to thank the CEO and HR for their support of this important board item. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Other questions?
Well, I just have one question, if I might. I know that there's a cost in recruiting and the training.
Yes.
And I know that we're being conservative here, both in the five positions that we're looking at versus the eight that was requested. I guess the question, my question would be, the benefit of having even the fixed positions for 18 months versus eight months, both in your ability to recruit those, having a stronger position to be able to recruit that, still protecting a conservative position for the overall operations as we look at the budget ahead for us next year, and also what's going to happen with the state action on the, what was a grant loan program that was very important to the assessor's office. So, I guess it's probably a redundant.
It would definitely help. A longer, yes, a longer fixed-term position would definitely help in our recruitment ability.
Mr. Johnston.
This is sort of both a comment and maybe a question to Paul. My understanding from our discussion yesterday is that the assessor will be able to hire these as regular employees, which means that they'll have all the benefits and will roll right into the employment base. It's only the question of how many allocations, and I think the eight-month period is probably to coincide with next year's budget and to, based on the experience and the results, to probably make them permanent.
Madam Chair.
As opposed to...
Supervisor Michael.
I guess my question is, why are we even doing fixed term for eight months to coincide with the budget when we have the ultimate budget power next year, and we've not been shy about removing positions when we needed to? And I know that the assessor always gives us a full-court press when he wants more people or doesn't want to lose any people, but this board has the ultimate responsibility for budgeting, and I have no fear that I can make the right decision at budget time. It just seems to me that we're kind of going through a drill that may not be necessary. I mean, if we're thinking that possibly in the next budget, eight months from now, they're going to become permanent, I'd rather just go for it, and then if I need to cut them, you will get my vote to cut them. But, you know, and I'm the big proponent of fixed term, but that came about more over grant monies, and my concern that grant monies were running out and positions weren't going away. And then, we were having to fuss with budgets and, you know, we had people left. Whereas, that to me is a whole different story than if this is actually a resource allocation situation where we need the personnel. If we get into, if we, quote unquote, the assessor gets into a budget crunch next year and can't, you know, out of whatever he's allocated, fund those positions, then the CEO will recommend that they go away, and the board will follow that recommendation.
Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the comments of my fellow board members, but I disagree for this reason. I think we should err on the side, it's not so much erring on the side of caution, erring on the side of letting our CEO work this process. I think that it has worked well for us. I think we're happy with where things have gone budget-wise. If our CEO was coming forward and saying these should be extended, then I think that's, I want, I need to have a really compelling reason to not let the CEO have that flexibility at this point in time. As easy as it is for us to say, "Yeah, we would cut them," it's still, it still creates some dynamic challenges, et cetera. And we have a system that has worked well, and that department heads go and work these things out with the CEO. We certainly have the right to do something different if we want to. This isn't, I'm not hearing a compelling reason to do that. And I would just err on the side of making sure the CEO has that clear flexibility, and I think it's very possible that he may come as we get to 2006, because this just says, "Do this now, and the assessor's office will work with the county executive office to evaluate the performance of these positions for fixed-term extensions or regular position status during the '06-'07 budget process." Quite frankly, given everything that's happened, I welcomed reading that line, because it was our assessor working with our CEO, and that's what we want to have happen. So, that's where I am.
If I might, I agree with most everything that you said, as far as it is good they're working together, and certainly it is within the purview of the CEO and his staff to make recommendations to us. But my concern is that, I'm hearing they're going to be hired as permanent anyway, as regular. And so, you know, this, it seems to me like an exercise in gamesmanship, and so, that bothers me, and I have to be very frank and honest about that. I have no problem going along with the CEO's recommendation, because it still gets us there. And I believe it still gets the assessor where he needs to go. And I did allude to the fact that he can be very insistent at times when he wants something. But I just want to make sure we're not making more work for ourselves and everybody else than we really need to if we can accomplish it a different way. If the rest of the board is happy with this, fine by me. I don't want to draw this into the world's biggest discussion.
I don't either, but I think maybe there's some merit in looking at a fixed term of 18 months just for the recruitment strength of going from recruiting someone for what they see as an eight-month window versus an 18-month window, and knowing that they're fixed term, they never become part of the permanent employment pool unless they perform and the assessor moves them up into that permanent pool. So, that way, there's, I think, then there's good flexibility on all sides, where the assessor gets to evaluate their performance, and they don't, and they don't or do become a permanent employee. And with the recruitment of an 18-month window, I think the competition is tough out there. So, I would like just to think a little compromise here and not certainly taking away from the good analysis of the CEO's staff and the work with the assessor and, you know, trying to see how to get him some extra help here. I just, hearing what we're hearing across all county agencies in the recruitment issue, if just a consideration for an 18-month fixed term as opposed to an eight-month. If there's any other thought on that or concerns with that, please.
Let me make a suggestion. If the concern, and Dan and I've talked a little bit about this, and, you know, there may be some reason for the concern, that if it affects the ability to recruit or retain, what if I just come back to your board? I'll work with Dan. If it looks like that's an obstacle to solving this problem, we come back and ask for them to be permanent positions. I think there's a difference between the position and the positions allocated on the fixed term and how they're hired. If they are hired and kept as fixed term only without the regular benefits and ability to be considered part of the workforce, that creates some difficulty. Maybe psychologically in the recruitment, it may be an issue right now, and if it is, we don't want to create any more psychological, you know, issues that are not necessary. But if you'll go ahead and approve the five positions so that we can get started with the recruitment, and I'll work with Dan, and if it looks like that somehow we've over-serviced this account and we need to take a different approach, then I'll be happy to come back and be the first to acknowledge it. But for now, I think this will work.
I'm happy with that. A good compromise.
May I make a comment here? It has been our hope that we will have the ability to perhaps recruit appraisers from other counties like Santa Barbara and Los Angeles County. The fixed-term appointment basically will just rule that out completely. So, it would be, it will make a difference in terms of how long that term will be, in terms of our job announcements.
Supervisor Bennett.
I know we don't want to talk about this too long, but I would just offer that, I would just offer that if we're trying to recruit somebody from another county, I don't think, I mean, it's, the issue is whether it's fixed or not. I mean, whether it's eight months or 18 months, somebody's not going to leave a secure job for something else. And in fact, one of the things would be, you'll know pretty soon whether we're going to make it, you'll know within eight months whether we're going to make it full-time with this setup. So, I, so anyway, that'd be my sense.
Can I ask a question? I know we didn't want to drag this out, but I guess where my confusion is, is you're saying that they can be hired as regular.
Appraiser two and a...
Okay, they'll be hired as regular, then what are these fixed-term, five? That's where I'm confused. Now, if you can solve that problem for me, I will make the motion, and we will move on.
I don't know. I may be confused too, but my understanding from talking with staff is there's another issue that hasn't been brought up yet today, because it is not necessarily part of this. But the state of California, the finance department, this governor's budget has changed some of the financing that they are for the local assessor's office. It didn't affect our county this year, but my understanding, it does affect us as of July 1 of next fiscal year. According to the assessor, that potentially eliminates 22 positions unless your board takes money from some other program and puts it into the assessor's office, which isn't beyond the pale. We just have to make tough decisions if there's not enough money to go around. So, with 22 positions possibly at risk, you know, I'm hopeful and optimistic we will solve that problem, but one of the requests that was made of our office to the assessor was, if this should happen, what is the plan? And I believe that that was one of the considerations as to why the budget office was being so conservative in this element. If you've got 22 positions potentially that'll be unfunded to be creating an additional five on top of that permanently, that takes you to 27 positions. So, they were attempting to balance that. So, I think that this can't be solved here in the boardroom very effectively, but that is one of the reasons.
Well, at least that would make sense.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine. I'm fine. I'm fine.
Other questions? Comments? Pleasure, the board.
Second.
And is that recommended action with Mr. Johnston's offer to, you know, certainly work with us and come back to us?
Yes, absolutely. But that would happen.
Motion of second. Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Next up is item 29, and that's a approval and authorization of a contract with our state advocacy program, and this is going to be presented by Ms. Hughes. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Long. Members of the board, Mr. Johnston, Sue Hughes with the CEO's office, Government Affairs. I'm before your board today with a recommendation that your board approve the renewal of contracts for Lynn M. Suter and Associates, the county's advocate in Sacramento. The Suter firm has represented the county in Sacramento since 1996 and has been capable and effective in representing Ventura County's needs, oftentimes called upon on very short notice. As you are well aware, since 2001, the government affairs staffing in the CEO's office has been significantly downsized, and which causes a lot of, a lot more phone calls and conversations with our folks in the Suter firm. The Suter firm has extensive knowledge of county's programs and policies, and which enhances their ability to carry out your board's state legislative agenda and platform. Attachment B to the board letter names just a few of those accomplishments that the Suter firm has been successful in, in working with not only our legislators in Sacramento, the administration in Sacramento... administration in Sacramento at times, your board, and departments when needed. So, with that said, I'd ask your approval of this item. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
What, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
What kind of an increase is this?
Somebody's done the math. If we had done the, if we had gone with a CPI that we had done with the Walters and Associates on the Washington DC side, Lynn's contract at this point would have been about $128,000. So, the increase to the 165, if you do the math, Johnny, I think we'd worked out from the original, what she's being paid now is somewhere in the neighborhood of about 60% increase if you look at, just from the 109, 950 she gets now.
Had, Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
So, they've not had any kind of an adjustment in the contract for how long?
For five years. And the increase...
And here we go again. I thought we were going to stop, try to stop doing that so that we had increases that looked to the public as enormous when in fact they are not. Had we done a normal incremental increase, you know, we're just paying today's value for the services received. But, you know, when you get into this, and I shouldn't pontificate, there may be cards, but, you know, it kind of frustrates me that, I understand all of the reasoning, why and how. What I'm saying is now we're back in that position of, we didn't do the fair market, you know, or the CPI, or whatever you want to call it, over a period of years because we felt we couldn't, maybe we shouldn't. But it was not based on the value of the services being performed. It was based on other needs. So, you know, I understand that, yeah, it looks like a lot, but I think it's, it's not really. It's that perhaps having to do it all at once, and I'm willing to do that, I'm also, if this goes forward, would request that in these personal services contracts that we try, if at all possible, to make these adjustments annually so we don't get into this situation. That's a long time to go with that, an increase in a service contract, five years.
Well, we really need this service. I move that we adopt the recommended action.
There's a motion and a second. Any further comment or questions? I would certainly support the motion, seeing no objection, then we'll move ahead. I, I think that Supervisor Michael said it, we're getting, today's value for services already received in the past. Things, this accomplishments list, I think, is thin. It's, it brings in some big numbers of success, but, you know, just the recent work that Suter and Associates have done with us on this Medi-Cal waiver that is still in front of us and has great impacts and is just invaluable. So, okay, seeing no objection, Fable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you still want to comment?
Did you want to comment, sir?
I think I'll do as quick as I can.
There you go. All right. Item 30, grand jury report. Here, you get lots of time to talk, Mr. Johnson. Are you presenting the grand jury report?
Well, is that next?
Yes, next.
Well, I'm not going to take a long time on it, but yes, yes, your board may want to, I don't know which subjects come to mind, and the one that was first on my agenda was obviously the Prop 36 issue. We have been meeting with the courts, with the grand jury, with all of the departments involved. You know, we, you've read the report and I won't repeat everything in there, but there will be a change in the location and the streamlining of the assessment processes recommended by the grand jury. But the major recommendation that I constantly refer back to, that I am not prepared to make a recommendation quite yet, is on the lead agency. Last year, the grand jury suggested that my office be the lead agency. This year, they're suggesting it be the probation department. When I speak with the health department and the health care agency, they indicate that it could be placed anywhere, as the grand jury has pointed out. On the other hand, it is a collaboration, which means everybody has influence over the process, so who's the lead agency? I'm not sure how much significance there is in that. But the thing I mentioned in our, in helping prepare your response to that particular recommendation is that the state of California, who is providing the funding for this, has placed it under alcohol and drug division, I guess, of the health department. And so, it seemed logical to do the same thing here. I would not want to bring a recommendation to you, even though the grand jury seems to be satisfied a change need be made, if it is contrary to the general policies of the state department who is helping raise the money for this. So, after this is filed, we've got a couple of more things we're doing here locally and then we'll make a trip to Sacramento and find out. Only one county out of all 58 actually uses someone other than the alcohol and drug group to supervise it, and they do use the probation department. So, that's not proof of anything. Not that it works or that it doesn't work because the reason it's done in that county is that they don't have adequate administrative resources, I'm told, to handle it outside the probation department. So, we're looking at it, we're keeping an open mind. Your advisory board thinks that it should stay where it is. I guess at this stage, I'm at that point where I use the, was it Einstein or somebody who got credit for saying, "If you keep doing the same thing in the same way and expect a different result, that may be a form of mental illness," or insanity, I think is the way the quote went. So, you know, maybe we have to experiment. Fortunately, all of the parties involved, from the courts, the district attorney's office, the sheriff's office, probation, as well as mental health, all are working really closely together. So, I think we probably have a unique opportunity if we decide we want to do some experimentation just to see if there's a little better way to do it, that we could do that without, you know, great risks. So, I will be talking to the state about that and hopefully the grand jury and we'll be satisfied with our response this year. They kind of beat up on us a little bit this time. So, unless you have questions on other parts of the report, we're about two days beyond where we'd like to be in getting this thing turned in, so we'd like you to...
Questions? Comments?
I do have comments. And then also, beyond just Prop 36, I have some questions or comments about some of the other items too. But regarding Proposition 36 and the program that we have, you know, the, I think that it's definitely worth a try putting in it with probation. I think that we may see improvement and that it's worth a try. I don't think the system's right now is particularly effective, even though it may not be effective in other areas. I don't think that's a reason enough not to try to do better. I was concerned about something that the grand jury didn't raise, and that is the issue I've mentioned before, that we have sufficient drug testing. And from hearing from Linda Scholman, she indicated that it would take close to like three-quarters of a million dollars or something for what she said would be effective drug testing. I don't, I would like to get confidence that we have the ability to do sufficient drug testing of these people who have had drug crimes and are out of jail. And in numerous, we have a report from the district attorney that we have had numerous defendants continuing to regularly use drugs and commit crimes while on Prop 36. And it's just so, such a deterrent, it hurts the whole program when you have users in the program hanging out with others in the program who are trying to get treatment. It's just, it's like one bad apple can ruin the whole barrel. So, I think it's important that we do everything we can to assure that people who are out in the Prop 36 program aren't continuing to use. And if drug testing is one of those things that has fallen because there isn't sufficient funding, I want to make sure that this program has all the tools it needs to be effective. So, I would like to, you know, I've already received a written email, you know, talking about how much it's going to cost to get testing to the point where we can actually do it more than once every six months for a client. I have, one of the people I appointed to the drug and alcohol board actually is a successful graduate of the Prop 36 program. And I believe he said once is what, is the number of times he was tested. And you have people who are heroin addicts and things like that, you need to test them. So, that's one of the things that I'd like to see addressed. And then I'm, like I said, I'm also very willing to see probation try this program. If they're willing to take it on, I think it could lead to an improvement. Because I think the problem with the program is that lack of monitoring and they are very good. That's what they do for a living, probation, is they monitor people on parole. So, I think that it has some potential there.
I appreciate what you had to say, Mr. Johnson, and I think it is in sync with what you're saying, Supervisor, in the sense of if, if, if there is a feeling that moving this to an agency that already performs some of these duties and the state says it's okay, then we should consider that more strongly. I just want to make sure, we have to be careful with our state partners. And the testing issue has always been, from the day the initiative passed, a weakness of the initiative. Initiatives are weak. I, I don't know that we've had one solid, clean initiative, but the cost of it...
I could tell you one.
Prop 1A. Or, the, the cost has always been the heavy hammer. And, and the state stepped in and, you know, the state needs to step in stronger. It is one of those tools, but I'd like to, you know, I'd like to hear from our experts what other avenues or tools might be available if we, you know, unless this board is willing to step into taking on that cost. So, okay. Was there an action on that? Did somebody say?
Yes, Supervisor Flynn moved her opinion.
You moved to send it forward in a second and the entire grand jury report?
Shall I then mention a few other things before?
Oh, okay.
One is just to note that through the Prop 63...
Yes, Prop 63, not Prop 36. The Prop 63 program through that, the Mental Health Act, we will, look like we'll have some funding to get a crisis team up and going. So, I'm glad to see that, though I know the grand jury's report seemed to be mostly concerned about the protocol and is it written, is it on the internet? But I think the overall, the real meat of it is, is we need an effective crisis team. So, I'm hoping that that will come forward with the Prop 63 funds, which will be presented to us, I think, next month.
Also, looking at the airport authority was, our Department of Airports had to comment on a report regarding the city of, or the school district, Oxnard School District, putting, citing a school along basically the runway in Oxnard. And just one of the comments in their conclusions, they were saying, the grand jury was saying regarding this school, that there is evidence that objections, criticisms, and recommendations have been resolved or mitigated as shown in the final environmental impact report. I don't think that's the case at all. I think the location is the problem. And one of the suggestions was mentioned to move the path that the helicopters take. And our airports rightly say that that is not a feasible solution. So, I think that is still very much up in the air and I think you get into those situations when you make poor citing locations, which this one, I think, certainly is. So, I think that that's all with my comments on this and certainly will support the motion to file this report and looking forward to seeing how far we can go towards moving this to probation, the Prop 36 program. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments? Okay. A motion, seconds to move it forward to the grand jury, the final report. Any objection to that? So ordered. Okay. Thank you for the work, sir. And the many departments who responded to the work and to the grand jury. And we'll move ahead on the items and see if we can all, as always, do a better job where appropriate. Item 31, recommendation, Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. This is a follow-up from the, our last meeting when I did a presentation on the senior summit. All the sponsors have been very generous in providing funding for this so this summit can be completely free in terms of free transportation, free food, no registration fee, and also allowing us to do some mailings and advertising. While the funds have been provided by the sponsors, it will be shown as coming out of my Board of Supervisors account, but it will be supplemented by the funding that's there. So, this basically is a recommendation to authorize those cash donations that were provided and that we recommend that the audit controller process the accounting transactions. And it's, this is a $20,000 increase to services and supplies and it's balanced with the contributions and donations.
Okay. Is there a motion?
That's my motion.
A motion and a second question, Supervisor Bennett?
I just want to, the auditors, okay with it? See, I mean, they're saying this is the right way to do it. Great. I just wanted to make sure that...
Okay. Motion, second. Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Good amount of money.
Another step there.
Good amount of money to raise.
Good work. Okay. Board members, we're done with our regular agenda. We will be going into closed session and if we can get out in time and make it out to the United Way celebration, great. Let's go. That's, anybody who's got a closed session item, come on down.
In whatever order, whatever. What, what, what?